At the seven o'clock hour, we'll start our workshop portion of our meeting from seven until seven thirty. And then at seven thirty, we'll start with our regular agenda. And with that, Natalie has very kindly offered to share with us some thinking by the city around potential zoning, around new affordable housing.
Yeah, zoning for affordable housing. Let me see, it should be up there.
There it is.
Okay, great. Yeah, so this was a presentation that I went over with the council at their last workshop meeting, just talking about, and it's not new content for them. I think this has been shared previously by the previous planner, John Clark, in terms of tools that can be used to incentivize the development of all housing in your community, which the argument is then has effects on affordable housing, as well as tools directly for affordable housing. So before jumping into the tools, I kind of wanted to give a bit of like regional background data information. And I did this for the council as well, that I kind of took some of these policies and compared them to data and strategies identified in the Dutchess County Housing Needs Assessment that was completed in 2022. So this is a county-wide study. There are some recommendations for Beacon that we'll get to at the very end. But I think just keep in mind that going through that this data is county-wide. So I think it will be an interesting next step to dive into the data specifically for Beacon, to kind of see how that compares to the county. They didn't do that in this study. But I think as we dive into the tools, the tools that we'll go through are kind of a more general, they're general points that I think there's additional research that could be go into each one of these to kind of target them and how best they would impact housing development in the city of Beacon. But again, this study was just looking at housing patterns and demand across the county. Twenty twenty-two is, you know, two years ago now, but as far as data and planning documents go, that's not very old. So they started with kind of noting that we do have slow population growth in the county. It's actually nice that we are seeing growth. There was a while where it was stagnant or declining. So we are seeing slow population growth, but shrinking household sizes, right? So this is, although the population is growing, the shrinking household size is also something that's putting a lot of pressure on housing and housing needs in the county. Large houses that used to house multiple residents and members of a family are now kind of, as you can see, the size of the average household is going down to two point four persons per household on average. So that's just kind of less people in each housing unit means there's a higher demand for more units. Aging population as well, which just comes into housing in terms of thinking what type of housing we're trying to build, where, and maybe what kind of accessibility needs that housing will demand. So we are seeing an aging population in Dutchess County, as you can see here, kind of significant in the fifty-five and older with decreases. I would suspect that this will be a little bit different for Beacon. Again, if we were to dive into the specific Beacon data here, but again, this is county-wide. The supply has grown in terms of housing, but it remains dominated by single-family homes and single-family districts around the county. We'll get into this specifically for Beacon as well. But, you know, nearly seventy percent of the housing stock in the county is single-family homes. And this has been pretty steady over the past decade.
So, sorry, the green is single-family homes?
The, yeah, the green on the top, the green is single-family homes, or sorry, the green is owners and the pink is renters. And then when you get to the right side of this table, the top, that sixty-nine, that larger portion is the single-family homes. And you can see that this is kind of maintained, being maintained in new construction as well, which is the far-right bar. So historically, we've been single-family homes, but we are continuing that pattern as well in development.
So that just means the market's responding to the release that expressed me without necessarily taking into consideration what we're talking about here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So, and then this is kind of getting into the affordability component. The study, the county-wide study did find that incomes have lagged behind housing costs. I think this is kind of a national conversation, talking about if you look, if you're looking at the left chart, right, the green color is talking about homeowners. And you'll see that the home values have increased over the past decade by over eighty percent, like the value of homes, whereas the incomes have only increased by less than sixty percent. That difference is even more drastic for renters, where the cost of rental housing has increased by over seventy percent, where most renter incomes have increased by less than forty percent. So the cost of housing is getting more expensive, but the incomes to pay for that are not keeping up. And then we're kind of seeing this as well in terms of the median renter affordability, which is the chart on the right. So pink is kind of the median gross rent. This is rent with all utilities and everything included, looking at the housing stock. So that's kind of the median rent that you'll see. And the median affordable rent was calculated, looking at the median kind of income and looking, a renter income, and then looking at affordability, meaning that a unit doesn't cost more than thirty percent of your income. That number has now dipped down below what the median rent is, right? So the average number of units are more expensive than many of these households can afford at an affordable rate. And then I, this was a really interesting piece of the study. They really zeroed in on where is the housing lacking in terms of where is it not matching up between incomes and rental costs or purchase prices, right? And what they found was where we're specifically lacking units is at the very highest incomes and at the very lowest incomes, which is actually putting a lot of pressure on that median range housing in terms of that kind of eighty to one hundred and twenty percent AMI. That we're seeing a lot of production of those units and even maybe an oversupply of those units. But we have higher income households kind of buying down and lower income households trying to buy up or rent up just because that's where the housing is. So we'll come into kind of the recommendations at the end, but they specifically tried to target, especially this lower end of income ranges, target that with affordable housing. And then, again, this is kind of getting into that cost burdens have risen, especially for renters. So I think if you want to look at the most recent numbers, it's the far pink band for each of these, for each of these bar charts, is the number of cost burden renters. And at every income, every income level except for the twenty to thirty-four thousand, this has increased, right? The number of renters who are cost burdened by the amount they're paying for their housing. So it is kind of hitting, I think the important thing here is it's hitting all income bands in terms of this, this kind of cost of housing, just jumping out a little bit far beyond what your income can support. So then the study went into recommendations. Like I said, they did identify a need to target renters who are earning less than that fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollars in terms of income. So what you're doing in terms of AMI bands or units that reach those income levels was identified as a goal. They also kind of set up, it's almost like a game plan for twenty years. They kind of identified, you know, based on our undersupply of housing, how many units would we need to kind of try to dig ourselves out of this? And they identified a number just over two thousand. And then they split that up by fair share across the county. And when they were looking at each city municipality or county or regions area for kind of fair share, they looked at what's the total distribution of households, how many households are making under fifty thousand, and kind of the location of jobs. And then, so this is how they kind of broke it up. And this is interventions. I think we could have a whole session talking about how they kind of define interventions. But it's kind of, you can think about it as units or bundles of units. And they kind of broke this up by average number of interventions per year that each area would need to make in order to kind of make the total number of interventions over twenty years. So you can see that Beacon's is pretty low, right? They identified five interventions a year for the next twenty years to get a hundred and five interventions in the community. This may be, I'd have to dig into this number a little bit. I think that might, the reason that number is so low is, A, we're going to get into the number of measures the city has done to include affordable housing in all new developments. So that's probably in terms of the percentage. But also, they base it on the number of households that are making less than fifty thousand. And I think by looking at the last comp plan information, that a significant portion of the population is making much more than that. And so that kind of fair share, that distribution wasn't necessarily here.
Sorry, this was done in twenty twenty, right?
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two, okay.
Yeah. I think they, when they started working on it, the twenty twenty census data hadn't come out. So they were using twenty nineteen as the most recent data.
Okay. So, yeah, all this stuff tends to kind of lag, right? Between the data, the reporting, and then the response, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But what I'm curious about is, is as of twenty twenty-two, and this is, this is county data collected, right?
They use US census data.
This is census data.
Yeah, a lot of it's US census data, with some probably county, using the rental housing survey and things like that.
What I'm curious about is whether, for example, for Beacon, it's taken into account, as you say, the interventions that have been part of applications, but not necessarily built. How, meaning?
Yeah, did they count the development pipeline and start counting units that hadn't been built? Especially because I think many communities saw between twenty twenty and today, we've seen a lot of approvals that haven't actually gotten built.
Yeah.
Kind of starting around twenty twenty-one, when the interest rates and everything really started to skyrocket in construction. So I'll have to, I would have to look into the data to see if they counted.
Just curious.
Pipeline. People often do. They count approved, approved units.
Yeah. Because that would, that would do two things. It would speak to whether or not Beacon is kind of keeping pace with the recommendations outside of the fact that these are recommended, meaning on their own, right? On our own.
Well, I can say, so the city was, Bruce helped me with this data. The city recently applied for the pro-housing community certification program under New York State. So this is, New York State kind of put out the certification program earlier this year. If you could demonstrate that you were seeing a growth in housing, they weren't specifically looking at affordable housing. They were looking at housing in general. If you could show three percent growth over the last three years and one percent growth over the last year, you were certified as a pro-housing community, meaning you had like zoning mechanisms in place and building permits going out that were building kind of the necessary number of housing. And City of Beacon, I think we were over one percent and three percent in both of those categories by just a little bit.
So just by that metric alone, it may speak to the fact that we are keeping pace with the recommendation.
Yeah.
What does that pro-housing status get you?
It's mostly, it's kind of, it gets you higher ratings than any grant applications, both private developers and the municipality. If you're applying for anything for funding from the state, they're going to give you extra points if you're a pro-housing community.
Yeah, okay. That's interesting.
So especially for a lot of the private developers who may be applying for Mid-Hudson Momentum Fund or CFA, the consolidated funding application, the city having that is going to help them be able to kind of get any of those housing program financing.
That's good, and that helps incentivize developers.
It helps them to be able to include the affordable housing. Yeah, absolutely.
Right? That's good.
Yeah.
Because even though we're keeping pace, it doesn't mean we can't exceed.
Yeah. And again, like keeping pace with this number, I think what I was trying to get at earlier is this, you know, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to try and maybe shoot a little bit higher than this as well, just because you're, maybe, there may be in Beacon, I'd have to dig into the data more, a need to kind of build back that workforce housing that was maybe lost in the earlier years of the revitalization, when you didn't have the inclusionary housing policies and tools that you're using now.
Yeah. Well, you call it workforce housing, really what it comes down to is the ability for people of lesser means, and especially the aging population, which is, which is important, because as we saw by your first, we're aging, and not just Beacon, but as a whole.
Yeah.
And yet there are real stresses on the aging population, and not only affordability, but access to healthcare.
Yeah, and then just seclusion and being able to be in an environment that you can easily walk to. And so that gets into a lot of the, we're constantly talking about walkability and accessibility. So, yeah, absolutely. Okay, so now getting into, so then they did kind of give a toolkit, the report did. And what we're going to kind of focus on, and what I focused on with the council at their request, was looking specifically kind of into this first one, this local site identification and land use updates for new construction, so kind of focusing on the zoning. But housing is a very intricate kind of puzzle in terms of trying to solve this affordability. So I don't want to make it sound like zoning is the only tool that you need to combat this. There's a number of other kind of rehabilitation, and especially right now, financing that is needed to actually get this housing built. But since this board kind of focuses most on zoning and how that impacts, I wanted to keep it to that. So as we've kind of been talking, the city of Beacon has already kind of implemented a number of tools that are in that best practice list of affordable housing tools. You guys have had accessory apartments, ADUs on the books for a number of years, way before many other communities in Dutchess County. Regulation of short-term rentals, permitting multifamily in all commercial districts. There's been a number of cases of facilitating affordable housing development on city-owned lots, right? Putting those out for requests for proposals. You do have an inclusionary zoning policy that requires workforce units for every new development without any give-back, which is pretty unusual and pretty, pretty forward for most communities in Dutchess County. And then also, what we're talking about right now is in front of the council, in front of this board, the elimination of parking minimums is also kind of seen as one of those best-practice tools. So those are the things the community has already done, there was already talking about. And then what I want to go through is additional, additional zoning tools that I kind of presented to the council that they're thinking about moving forward. Not all of these, right? This was kind of the list. Some of these, like I said at the top, require more research into the actual numbers to see, is this an appropriate tool for the city of Beacon, and how should this tool be implemented? But so one of them is, you know, going back to that first slide, talking about how seventy percent of the housing supply in Dutchess County is single-family homes, right? And eventually, you're just not going to have enough space to keep building single-family homes there. And this is one of the best practices in kind of smart growth development, is in areas that are served by municipal water and sewer and services, looking to densify in gentle ways. Not always massive multifamily, but how can you add softer density? So one of those is, you know, looking at, this map is highlighting the number of R1 districts kind of throughout the city. So looking at these R1 districts and thinking about which portions of these or areas could maybe two-family homes be permitted in addition to one, single-family homes? Or alternatively, maybe kind of updating this map where some of these are, these R1 districts become higher-density districts that do allow multi, two-family, three-family, or multifamily. And this is kind of what has happened around the center, the Main Street core, with the transition zone, with the transition district. So there could be more work into either of those to look at how the zoning could be tweaked to incentivize just the land area in the city of Beacon that could be used for slightly higher density.
Sorry, am I right that on that map, the, on the upper right, that's fifty-two going out of town, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so that's Fishkill Avenue fifty-two that kind of runs out. So that's where you see a lot of the, where we've had a lot of the GB districts, right? The, along Fishkill.
Yeah, so just asking relative to that, that particular focus by the committee and how this particular conversation plays back into that conversation, right? What they're, what they're talking about on the committee.
Yeah, so it's interesting. There's a lot of conversations about housing and zoning going on at the same time right now. So it's, you know, I think Fishkill's looking at this, the Fishkill Avenue Committee is looking at this one corridor where there is a subcommittee focused specifically on zoning. And then we have the council looking, obviously, citywide.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
Yeah.
And yeah, I think as long as they're sort of, as it relates to the Fishkill Corridor, this conversation that the city's having, that they're speaking to one another. I'm sure they are.
Yeah, good thing I'm sitting on all the, good thing I'm sitting on all the committees and boards.
I think, yeah, and there are some, there are some good examples of the smaller multifamily that have really been knit into the residential community that exists, either, I think it's on Chestnut or Eliza on the north side of Main Street, where the scale, you know, is not overwhelming at all to the.
And oftentimes, you can do this by going and looking at the existing urban forum, right? Where in, there are a few places where there is an existing two-family in an R1 district that was there historically, that if it burns down or whatever, cannot be built back. So many times when you're first looking at this tool, if we were to dig into one of these, if the council wanted to dig into these, my recommendation would be to go and look at the actual land use and see where you are seeing two families already, right? And those would be the areas you would focus on, because it's already a part of that fabric of that neighborhood. And you would look to see if it's an appropriate tool there. That's where you would start. So then there's also, which, again, I think there's been a lot of work around this already in the city of Beacon, but there's always room to improve, of looking at increasing development potential, kind of near transportation, which in this case, you know, the train station. And so obviously, linkage district and the waterfront districts do have tools already for that. But there is an area to look at, could you incentivize more affordable housing in these areas? Could you allow greater densities somehow and tweak those? Because, again, for that mobility aspect of both kind of all households, but also senior households in terms of being close to public transit is a huge benefit.
The, so when you talk about greater densities, for some reason, my mind immediately goes to developers seeing dollars, right? Because that's always the struggle sometimes, right? You have developer looking to, for the sake of return, max out density, however possible. And it leads to some pretty awful applications, right?
Yeah, it can, it can, but you can also see in areas where, and I don't know, I wouldn't say that this is necessarily any of these districts, and maybe not in the city of Beacon, but where if densities aren't high enough, and the cost of development is at a certain point, you'll see less development there, just because you need a certain kind of economy.
That's understood. There's a, yeah.
You know, so I think it's on both sides, but like, I think absolutely, there does need to be controls to make sure it's not just, some people would argue differently if they have a totally free-market approach to something, right? But I think.
Fair.
Yeah.
And of course, you know, developers are people too.
Yeah. Well, you know, I try and approach it as, we need the developers to build affordable housing, right? Municipalities are no longer building affordable housing. The state is not building affordable housing. You do have some nonprofits, but few and far between, not enough. And so if we want to get ourselves out of this hole, the developer needs to be the partner in this.
Agreed. And so for that reason, how do you incentivize good developers toward that balance, right? Because of course, they need to see a return. They need to see, you know, the fact that they're committing capital.
Yeah.
But then when you talk about it in context of affordable housing, of course, you know, a lot of the applications that we've seen recently with developers is a mix, right? Because you talked about that imposed requirement.
Yeah.
And that doesn't, that doesn't appear to be burdensome. But, you know, the question is, is that enough? Is that, is that meeting the need in terms of the income levels, right?
Yeah.
And then how, how best to make sure that that right balance is struck going forward for good development, right? With developers that we know do reasonably good work, right?
Yeah. And I mean, I think there's a lot of ways to have the balance that, right? Like defining what good development is. And then unfortunately, a lot of this comes down to, anything's possible, right? If you can get all the grants, if you're savvy with all the grant writing, and you know how to tap into the Lytech program, and you know how to tap into the Mid-Hudson Momentum Fund, then yeah, you could feasibly build anything, right? If you can get that funding, or some development companies maybe just have that equity, and they can, they can do that. And if the market's hot enough, they'll get that return. But it is a whole balancing, I think.
Yeah, but what you're describing is somewhat relying on the market, relying on the private owner, you know, so.
Yeah.
And I know zoning can't solve every issue. Some of it is zoning and other legislation.
Yeah. And we'll get into that, because I think that's a point that comes up when we talk about the inclusionary housing policy and whether that could be tweaked. I think that starts to play into this, like the pro forma, how does this pencil out? And there is a lot of research and data that if you put that percentage too high, and the market can't sustain that, you will actually decrease the amount of housing that's built in your community.
Yeah, you're going to disincentivize it, yeah. Oh, wow, we're having so much fun.
So other ideas are, you know, making multifamily a permitted use in the RD district. It is a special permit use right, right now, but if you permitted that more freely, maybe you could potentially see more. And then identifying new kind of larger lots in the city that could be rezoned as RD and allow for a multifamily. This is again, just trying to increase the number of districts that do permit multifamily. There is a lot of talk about, you know, in terms of permitting smaller lots or expanding regulations for kind of more compact housing, like townhouse developments. And then, you know, further encouraging, so there's also a lot of work that can always be done of looking back at your zoning and making tweaks, right? Zoning is not meant to be something that's like, you put it in place and it's going to just work exactly as you thought it was going to work, and there's not going to be any issues. It doesn't work like that. So even if you do have a policy on the books, there is always room to be looking at the data to see, okay, are we seeing the number of ADUs that we want to be seeing in the community? Is it hard to develop these? Are there things that we could do to make this more feasible? And again, this kind of gets to the aging housing that we do, it's not only, you know, meant for that population, but we do see a lot of kind of mother-in-law suites or family living on the, on the same parcel, just with separate spaces, like this one that was featured in the Highlands Current in Beacon.
Yeah, that guy looks super happy.
What?
Yeah.
Good.
He's like, this is my house.
And then, again, a little bit outside of zoning, but I think the tool that we talked about with the council was targeting more, looking for more city-owned parcels that are underutilized, that could be developed for affordable housing. And where that would come into zoning is in those areas, right, where the city does have a lot of control. And you, that would be a place where zoning could maybe be tweaked even further to, to kind of get to the conversation where we have more latitude to play with the rules of making good development, but also making it feasible, because the city gets to choose at what price they sell this land. So I think that is an area where you can include more affordability, and you can make that kind of pencil out and happen.
So there's some of those city-owned would be kind of like a PPP?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then I think two more. Smaller units, so you don't, and smaller units, you don't necessarily have like a minimum unit size in Beacon, except for ADUs and your below-market rate units. Those do have minimum sizes for them, and I think those are there intentionally for some kind of, some protections. But there are some communities that are looking at this tool of maybe regulating residential based on the total square footage of residential, rather than the number of units, right? In some of the zoning districts, you do have a total unit count that can be within a building. You could think about that as, you know, as square footage instead. So folks, developers could break up those units in different ways and make more kind of, what's it called? And then micro-units is kind of how it's referred to right now in the trending news articles, or incentive for creating smaller units. So this kind of gets to the shrinking household size that we see a lot, right? Average is, I think it was two point four. That's being brought down a lot by single occupancy households, right? Like, single individuals or maybe two individuals living in a, living in a unit that could and would or want to live in smaller units to kind of live downtown. And then always ways of, this is, you kind of get, comes to this board, of looking at ways of how do you streamline the approval process for affordable housing to make that, to make that, and to incentivize that even more, right? Time is also, money factors into the cost of the development of the open housing, of development of affordable housing. So are there additional incentives, like if someone's providing a higher percentage of affordable units, do they get some kind of streamlined approval process? Or looking at ways of seeker, right, of, you know, there's type-two actions that don't require the full kind of seeker review. Could you, you are as a local municipality allowed to create that list for yourself of what is a type-two action? So you could look at multifamily of a certain size, of a certain number of units, and you could add that to your local list of type-two actions that doesn't require seeker review. And then again, redoing, you're looking at the regulations for short-term rentals, which is kind of seen as a, while short-term rentals do have kind of benefits for the tourism economy, it does put pressure on, on the housing stock for permanent households. So making sure that the regulations are serving the community well. Oh my gosh, I'm sorry. And then the, I think, this is the last one. And then, like I said, there is ways of looking at tweaking the inclusionary zoning policy, whether it's maybe adding benefits, adding an incentive for higher percentages, maybe varying the, right now, I think they hit certain AMI levels, now knowing that the county is trying to target fifty thousand, households of fifty thousand and less. Do we need to tweak that AMI band of where we're targeting and vary it? So there is ways to kind of tweak that policy, again, with the caveat. What, yeah. But again, with the caveat that this is probably the trickiest one to work with.
For the balance we were just talking about.
To balance, yeah, exactly what we were talking about. And that's it. You asked me if I was going to take the full thirty minutes, thirty-one.
You did great. And look, by the city's clock, we're still on time.
Twenty-nine. Oh, okay, perfect.
So, you know, real clock, we won't pay attention. If we're in here, we'll use that one. But thank you. Super-duper interesting, really, really informative. Would you be able to share this with us?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm sure it's accessible or available somewhere.
Yeah, but if you say.
If you would mind just sending it to our email addresses, that'd be great. Thank you. So let's see, what month is this? Welcome, everybody, to the July twenty twenty-four City of Beacon Planning Board Meeting. Welcome everybody to the July 2024 City Beacon Planning Board Meeting. We are only just a quorum at the moment. I don't know where the rest of our esteemed colleagues are, but.
Lens away.
I know lens away. Um, hopefully we'll expect to see David and maybe Randall, but we can proceed, uh, as we are. Um, first order of business, uh, last month's minutes, um, unless there are additions, changes, I'll accept a motion to enter those minutes into the record.
Motion to enter into the record.
Motion by Kevin.
I wasn't here, so I can't vote on that.
Well, then we don't have a quorum, we gotta wait till next month. Okay, we'll hold that over until next month.
Or until later meeting.
Good point. You're optimistic. Somebody's gonna show up. It is August after all.
No, it's only July.
July.
July, however.
It feels like August.
Oh my gosh.
You're right, it does.
It feels like the dog days. Um, I will, I will note though, however, that, um, we, we do hope that one additional member shows up because we have an application here tonight where.
Well, for 39.
One of us has to recuse.
For 45, I don't think there's any action to take.
For 45, we just need to review. Okay, so with all of that, we will, um, go to our first agenda item, and that is the continued review of an application for subdivision approval, uh, at 39 Helen Avenue submitted by John Vergara. Evening.
Good evening. Mike Bodenorf, engineer for the applicant. So last month, we didn't submit any plans. Um, we understand that there is a, um, resolution drafted for tonight. Um, we did confirm with the health department after the last meeting that they do want to review that pump station design, so that has been submitted. So that was the reason why we didn't provide any new plans. They may ask for a note or two, for a note or two, and then the note that John Russo is looking forward, just didn't see the need, their housekeeping items, so we would like to handle those as conditions of approval.
Okay, yep, understood. Um, good. Yep, knowing that we have the draft in front of us, um, just check with our planner and engineer to make sure you're all square at the moment.
They're gonna address the comments as they get the plans back from DOH.
Okay, so we, we can act on this? Any questions or comments around the board?
I think we already reviewed it, right?
Yeah, thoroughly reviewed and obviously with the understanding that, um, final approval won't happen until I sign. All that stuff needs to be in place with the DOH.
Correct.
And John's remaining comments. Uh, with that, then I'll accept a motion to adopt the draft resolution that Jen's office has prepared.
Motion to adopt.
Motion by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Karen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. One question.
Yep.
Uh, can we submit for architectural review before the plans are signed? Just in case health department takes a while to review, I don't know what their workload is.
I think you would need to. Yeah, you'd need.
Oh, okay.
So is this subject to architectural review?
The construction of this, yeah, the multifamily.
For the new house, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I think you would need to.
Okay, great.
So we want to get that either on our regular agenda or a subcommittee meeting.
The, um, air, the AOB agenda.
That's what, yeah, AOB subcommittee.
No, not the subcommittee, the actual, the second portion of your regular. It's just the.
That's how we.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the late.
Late, late.
The late, late show. Yes, yes. Um, so yeah, but just, I guess, just make sure you get that to Mercedes and yes, the architectural review, not the subcommittee, I understand.
It's okay, it's not.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I don't even know what month we're in, so I don't know why I'm sitting here. Okay, we will continue on. Um, I'm certain I'll get all of this right. We're continuing the review of the, of an application for site plan and subdivision approval, mixed-use commercial and residential, 45 Beekman, High Street and High Street, submitted by Beekman Arts. Good evening.
Good evening. It's good to be back before you.
Before you start, I think you're accusing yourself in the sub.
My name is Donna Francis, I'm going to recuse myself because I work for 45 Beekman.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just for the record, so at this point, we don't have a quorum of the board. The board can, can proceed with the review, um, just note that there's no quorum, so it's sort of an informal feedback at this point until another.
Yeah.
Member of the board joins us. I'm being optimistic that David will join.
So you have a choice, you can wait. I know, um, your colleague likes to jump ahead in line, but if you'd like, you could, you could wait to get a full quorum, hoping somebody shows up, or, yeah, we're, we're more than happy to give you any feedback we have now.
Okay.
As a.
Yeah, I think we're happy to proceed and take any feedback that you guys have.
Cool.
Um, so good evening, for the record, my name is Alison Fausner, I'm an associate attorney with the law firm Cuddy &amp; Vader, appearing on behalf of the applicants Bay Ridge Studios and Beekman Arts Center LLC. Uh, tonight, I'm joined by our project architect, Arielle Segal, our project engineer, Justin Dates, and our project traffic consultant, Rich D'Andrea. As promised at last month's meeting, we're appearing before you tonight with a comprehensive package of the alternative right-of-way design. That's what we're calling it. It's the, uh, project that's utilizing the surplus property, um, by Beekman Street. Of course, we have to apply to the DOT to gain access and rights to that property. Uh, we spoke with DOT last week to fine-tune a couple of questions we had about the formal request, and that formal request will be submitted this week with copies provided to the city and updates given to your board as we receive them from DOT. Uh, so I want to turn it over to our project consultants right now to take you through the revised site plans, the engineering reports, and the traffic studies. So I'll start with Justin.
Good evening, Justin Dates, Collier's Engineering and Design. So since we were last before the board, uh, we had that single sheet of the alternate site plan that we, uh, kind of walked the board through, and we advanced a couple of items, uh, to address consultant comments, uh, as well as that, uh, design in particular. Um, a couple of things that we provided in addition to the plans, we did, um, provide an existing, uh, tree plan, uh, basically identified six inches or greater DBH trees on the, uh, on the site, uh, provided a plan, uh, mostly made up of Norway spruce, others, uh, included, uh, black locust, the black cherry, uh, on the site, and, uh, basically a lot of it's, if, you know, as you know, the site, the whole center is essentially developed right now, and the fringes are where these existing trees, uh, exist. Uh, based on the design, most of that would be, uh, getting removed with exception of the northeast, I'm sorry, northwest and some of the, uh, existing trees along, um, of nine. So we did provide a plan that, that showed that. Uh, we also provided, uh, an I and I report. Um, all the existing, uh, roof leaders for the, uh, the building discharged to grade, there's no floor drains. Uh, we did identify an existing, uh, sump pump in the small basement, uh, area that's in the building that appears to, uh, discharge to the, um, uh, interior wastewater piping. Um, Mr. Russo, Russo had some comments on that, we'll dig into that for a little more information.
Yeah, maybe you have a question for, for Mark.
Uh, so then we, as I mentioned, we also provided the detailed, uh, site plans, um, for the, um, uh, modified site and taking into account utilizing some of that right-of-way along, along Beekman. So, you know, as we mentioned last time before the board, it was able to move that building one or the Beekman Street building really right up against the frontage of Beekman Street. Um, it's, uh, we're still at 64 units, uh, the total, uh, retail square footage for both the buildings is now 14,892 square feet. Uh, proposed parking on-site, we provide 88 spaces, there's 41 garage spaces in building one, and then 47, uh, surface, uh, spaces, uh, behind buildings, uh, one and two. Uh, that 88 is, um, total parking spaces based upon the shared parking analysis, um, that Rich can speak to, uh, when he gets up here, but that's, uh, maximum, uh, required parking spaces for the uses as identified by that shared parking analysis. Uh, access points remain from, uh, Tompkins Avenue and then, um, from Beekman, uh, really at the existing curb cut that's, that's there. Uh, and then some of the, uh, other items detailed in the, uh, in the plans, uh, we did a full landscape plan, uh, where we tried to, um, uh, adhere to or comply with some of the linkage, uh, zoning requirements for streetscape. Uh, right now, the existing sidewalk is from, uh, face of curb to back of sidewalk right now is about eight and a half feet. We're looking to essentially maintain that whole, um, hardscape area or sidewalk area, and based on the location of the property line where the buildings fall, we are looking to expand that, you know, to gain access into the, uh, into the buildings. So in, for building one, um, behind that, uh, existing sidewalk, eight, you know, eight and a half feet, there's a minimum of another eight and a half feet to gain access to the arcade, uh, on building one. Uh, similar on building two, uh, there's another four or five feet behind the, uh, the existing sidewalk dimensions, uh, again, to get to the, the front facade of the building or that access to the arcade. Um, now, our expansion of the sidewalk in those areas, it's not the full extent of the frontage. Um, as you know, you know, the high side up at the intersection of, uh, you know, 9D and, and Beekman is the high, and as you progress to the west, the grade of that road drops off, uh, quite a few feet. So we, we have kind of isolated for building one, uh, an expansion of the sidewalk to get access to the building. On either, either sides of that, there would be some, uh, grade change that we're accommodating. Um, it's landscaped with different, uh, shrub species, evergreen, deciduous, some perennial species, um, street trees, we have, um, benches, uh, placed on, on certain, uh, areas there as well. Uh, and then as you progress west and you get between the two buildings, we have a surface of bio-retention area, uh, for part of our stormwater management, uh, and treatment. So that, you know, we've, is, would be fully landscaped. Um, we've identified a, a bio-retention type of seed mix, which is filled with different, uh, sedges, rushes, aster, um, Joe pie weed, um, iris, so a, a good mixture of, you know, herbaceous, herbaceous type, um, plant material within the, uh, the bio, and then along the fringes, again, uh, you know, preth the different types of shrubs. Uh, we have some shade trees or street trees, if you want to call them, along the perimeter there, some maples. Um, and then as you continue, uh, west, you get to building two, uh, we have incorporated, uh, some, uh, street trees, some hornbeams, kind of a columnar, uh, type of smaller tree, uh, as to introduce vegetation in front of building two right on the, uh, the sidewalk there, so. Uh, the landscape plan details all that out and, and the various species that we're looking to use, uh, to plan out the streetscape and the remainder of the site. Uh, we also did provide an updated lighting plan, uh, the overall average foot candle, uh, measurement for the site, uh, as noted by the, uh, the city planner, was, was high in the previous designs, we brought that down to just, uh, at to 1.1 foot candles across the site, uh, which would be in compliance with the, uh, the linkage, uh, zoning.
Justin, before you leave that, there are some areas that are still hot. You're up at 3.9, some areas.
Yeah, understood, but the, the code speaks to, and the exact language is averag, about the average and not the.
Yeah, I'm just saying, can you look further at that? Because you do have.
You want us to drive it?
Three locations that you've got some areas that are 2.5 and higher, up to 3.9.
Okay. Okay, we take a look at that. That's my, uh, summary, if you want to touch on anything.
Um, there's, there's a number of things I, I think we need to touch on, um, but let's, for, for your group, let's just finish.
Sure.
What you wanted to update us on, and then, and then we'll address, uh, a few things.
Okay.
Because I think there's some pretty specific, it's great you're thinking about trees right now, but those aren't the top of the list of things I think we want to talk about.
Is traffic at the top of the list?
It is. Surprise, surprise.
Is Stark on, actually, or?
Is, yeah, I was gonna ask, are you with us, Stark?
I'm here while I'm allowed to be here.
I'm sorry, did you say?
I'm airborne, that's the joke.
You're here and you're happy to be here? What?
Yeah, I'm happy to be here.
Okay. Good, glad you're with us, and you can hear okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, I think it's been a while since I've last been here to talk about traffic for this project specifically, so I'll run through just some, some kind of updates that we went through since I was last here. Um, we did revise our traffic study, uh, to address both comments from Creighton Manning as well as from the New York State Department of Transportation. Um, just to give you a quick reminder, we, we analyzed five different intersections in, in the area of the site, uh, 9D and Verplank, 9D and, and Tompkins, 9D and Beekman, um, 9D and, and Main Street, and then the Beekman Street, High Street intersection were the five locations. Um, I'll get into those a little bit more. One of the things that we did include in our updated traffic study, which was requested by the DOT, was, uh, an accident analysis that included those five intersections. Um, so that analysis is detailed in our report. The, the accident analysis, we, we kind of take a look at historical data for the last five years of accidents, um, and go into what the accident rates are at those intersections based on the number of vehicles entering at the intersections, and then we compare it to statewide averages to get in the handle on whether or not those intersections are experiencing accidents compared, comparable to other, uh, average rates experienced for similar type intersections in the state. Generally, the five, the four of the intersections were all found to be slightly lower or comparable to statewide averages, so that's a, that's a good thing. Um, the intersection at 9D and Verplank had a slightly higher accident rate than statewide average, so that's something that we'll have to talk to the Department of Transportation about a little bit and see if there, there's something that they want to see done there to maybe mitigate that condition. Um, then, as we get further into our analysis, uh, we, I think we've mentioned, talked about this last time, but there are several other developments that we took into account, so, uh, in our, in our projections of future traffic conditions, so we had the Miracle Beacon Project, Main Street, uh, several, various projects on Main Street, Edgewater, um, Beacon Commons, and Prophecy Theater were the key ones. Um, there was some other additional information that we provided as far as detailing out how we derived the projections for those, uh, developments, uh, in our analysis that we provided based on the comments from both DOT and your consultants, so that was, the information was provided. And then we got into the analysis of existing and future conditions for the, the five intersections, and, and basically from that, we identified a couple of different mitigation measures, some of which we've talked about already and some of which are, are new. So, um, at the intersection of 9D and Tompkins, we had talked about how that intersection was supposed to be monitored for signalization as part of the Edgewater Project. That's still our recommendation is that that gets monitored as part of that project, um, and that we may be part of the, uh, contribution to putting in a signal there if it is determined to be warranted and approved by the DOT. Uh, at the intersection of 9D and Beekman Street, we had recommended some signal, uh, phasing and timing modifications, um, that we feel would significantly improve the operation of that intersection. Uh, the key thing there being that we're looking to take the Beekman Street approach and the Church Street approach and make them split phase, so they operate separately, not concurrently, which would allow volume out of Beekman Street to flow more freely, uh, if there's an, so there, they wouldn't be, uh, waiting for opposing traffic off of, out of Church Street. So that would require some signal modifications there, um, that would, that we're looking to discuss with the Department of Transportation, waiting for some input on. Um, similarly, at, at Main Street and, and 9D, there's some just coordinated signal timing modifications that if we make the changes at Beekman Street, we would have to coordinate them as well with the timings at, at Main Street. And then lastly, at the Tompkins Avenue site access, one of the concerns from your traffic consultant was that the proximity of the driveway at that location to 9D is fairly close. Um, there'd be concern about whether vehicles could get in and out of that driveway effectively without, with other vehicles queued on Tompkins. So our recommendation there is actually to provide, do not block the driveway striping and signage. So the the white striping and sign and signs that say do not block driveway. That's something that we would add to the site plans as part of the future submission. On parking, so not drastically different than what we've talked about last time, but. Based on the current city city code, the this, the project requires one hundred and nine parking spaces. We provided a shared parking analysis that we we kind of detailed last time that we were here. When we do that shared parking analysis, we we see that a peak parking demand of eighty eight parking spaces is what we see as being required. The last time we talked about this, there was some discussion about whether or not we should take credit for the proximity to the rail line. As well as, you know, the use of the provision for bike storage on the site. We did do a separate analysis of the shared parking to identify what it might be, what the parking demand might be. If we did take that credit, but we've provided eighty eight parking spaces on the site based on not assuming that, assuming that that credit was not applied. And lastly, we're also in the process, obviously, of monitoring the city's potential change to parking codes. If if and when that gets adopted, the the site would be considered. Parking compliant. So at eighty eight spaces. I know you said there's more on traffic that you want to get into, but I don't know if you want to let REA speak first or?
Is there more?
No, I don't know that you that you might want to.
Let's, yeah, let's roll through the rest of it. We do, we do want to touch on a lot of things.
Yeah.
So you may be back.
Good evening. Happy to be here too.
I can tell.
So, um, yes, so basically for building one, we submitted revised plans. And the major change was at the first floor plant. We changed the way the covered arcade works based on what we talked about at the last meeting. So now the arcade wraps around the street sides on, you know, both faces. Instead of being continuous and repetitive, it's broken up by, you know, pieces of solid building. That get interspersed and then that that also happens at the corner. But there's still openings and it's still an open arcade, but it's just treated differently. So that arcade also creates, you know, additional pedestrian space at the first floor in front of the building. And. So that that's really what the change was on the floor plans. We also started looking. At the building design now that we have that footprint set, you know, based on the revised property situation. And the the idea is to fit the building into the historic context of the neighborhood and Main Street. And so, you know, we incorporated a number of elements into the design to start. Getting to that. So, you know, we have that arcade, there's a tower at the corner of the building. The tower extends above the roof line. Because we're going to use that roof as a solar collector. And and that's one of the two things that you're allowed to project above the roof line in the zoning. We have the windows with vertical proportions, upper and lower cornices. Traditional type of storefronts. Peers that divide the building, you know, so it's not this one solid face. It's divided vertically into sections as we go along the facade. And then there's, there'd be a mix of materials which we'll get further into as we, you know, develop the design and work with the ARB Subcommittee. We're also working on additional site sections that you would ask for, you know, so so we see what it's like from. The residential properties on Main Street. And we'll submit those for the next meeting. So. You know, so basically this is still schematic. We're hoping to get some consensus, you know, from the board and the ARB Subcommittee. So we can sort of start blocking in the design and move forward with that and also get into the. The smaller building, which would be similar, but. You know, it it would be designed in the same kind of vein.
Yeah, so are you, are you saying by that, by mentioning the ARB Subcommittee, you feel like you're ready to go into that?
Yeah, I mean, I think we have the the basic massing and the general strategy. So, you know, I think what we'd like to do is start, you know, honing that down so we don't just keep coming back and forth.
Couple of other questions, so I'm seeing your group of renderings here. I'm just curious, this is representative of just the more prominent larger building right now.
Right, yeah.
So, yeah, I think before we talk about. Scheduling ARB, you want to include the smaller building.
Yeah.
I'd really like to understand how those two relate to one another.
Right, yeah, no, I mean, that that would be part of the ARB session.
Yeah, okay, good. And then since we're on it, we'll sort of work backwards based on your presentation. This. Yeah, it's an RAAS sequel classic, you know, it's starting to take on, you know, a lot of those traditional forms that are, you know, quite unoffensive and, you know. Contextual. I gotta say that this building is going to significantly change the feel and character of that corner. And so while I appreciate this idea of the arcade and how the building starts to engage the street. And the experience, the pedestrian experience. I'm curious as to why you wouldn't take right at that corner. And continue to to engage and help kind of make that corner feel more spacious. To the, to the user, to the person on the on the sidewalk and to the person sort of then also engaging, not just passersby. People engaging the building. It looks like storefront at the moment. So I would give some real thought to that because that's a, that's a tight turn, it's a sort of a, it's not a full ninety.
Right.
And it's, it's very dynamic, it comes up, it's that curve and then it goes down. So again, I I implore you to really think about that corner, it's a prominent corner. It's, it's, this is going to completely change the character of that corner.
Right.
So. Yeah, this has got, you've got to get this right.
Yeah.
And again, I understand this is early, it's a schematic and you're, it's it's an evolution, right? But. And again, you know, just in terms of materiality. Brick, yeah, but black. We got to think about something a little lighter. I don't know, again, it could be schematic, could not be, maybe it's not your final kind of choice, but. Very Gothic, it's very heavy, very inviting. Right, so again, just think about this as representative of, you know, sometimes some people's first experience coming into Beacon. And it's, it's the main intersection. And I know this building here isn't helping much, but. This is the start to, you know, some other potential further development in this area and you want to strike the right toe.
Yeah. Makes sense.
That's all I'll have to say on that. Do you guys have anything else in terms of your overall presentation?
No.
Okay. So while you're standing there. Anything else from this group, just in terms of the aesthetic, the architecture and knowing your.
Are you wanting to?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, you know.
Help me out.
Yeah, knowing that you guys are going to be spending some time with.
It's, 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 there's going to be really important time span on this and I don't want to get caught up in interim stage. Also, I don't want to. Have you get approval for things that might change where the context might change? I mean, there's, you're already contingent on getting access to this property for this particular floor plan, right? For this, for this setup. And that's continued, that's not a done deal yet, right? It may in fact work out fine, the state may be glad. I feel like if, I feel like you should understand that we haven't. Looked at options on how this building sits on the site yet, right? As a board and you may be going forward with the assumption that.
Is your mic on?
It is not. You may be going forward with the assumption that we're sort of okay or that we don't, I I don't think we've expressed an opinion on the site plan. And the location of the building on the site, right? Specifically.
Some.
Some, but obviously we haven't, but I, if the, if if the record that we're making here in our hearings, right? I don't want it to be assumed that there aren't better ways to cite the building, let me say. Also, I think we've asked like three times for a section to be drawn. And I really feel very strongly that we can't understand how this building is going to exist in the city as an actual object until we see a section. A detailed section where the streetscape is shown through the building, how the parking relates and how that steep slope and the adjacent. Residences there. What their relationship is, that relates to how you're dealing with the. Retaining walls and your parking and your relationship and it directly affects the passing that you have. And the actually the amount of units you're putting on there, right? So those are critical things that are more fundamental than. The. The rendering, which we could get into a lot of detail. I have some questions about it.
True.
How you, is this a chat GPT generated image?
No, it was, it was just some like loose renderings that I did based on my SketchUp thing.
Why is it so weird? You looked at it, right?
Yeah.
It's all very.
Yeah, some, some of them are a little.
It's like it has six fingers and stuff, you know, so I was like, did you like just ask? I didn't, I don't know what's how that stuff works now, but it looked very. Uncanny, there's a lot of people, it used to be a thing when I was in school.
Talk about this one?
Yeah, it's weird and.
It's got a nice quality to it, but I almost thought it was a handmade model.
I was thinking Anthony Perkins and, you know. It has a, it has a weird vibe to it, right?
So, yeah.
That's a whole other thing.
Point well taken, it's, it's certainly very early for ARB. But also I agree with you, I think. Number one, you're taking a risk here, right? Because a lot of this is contingent, as Kevin mentioned, on your ability to. Take control of that parcel. Right, that part of the parcel. So that being what it is. There, there are a lot of things about context and you do have a section here, but I think when we discussed last month. The, the importance that Kevin's alluding to is around. What's happening to the residences to the rear up on High Street.
Right, yeah, and and that, that's what I was mentioning, that we're going to develop those.
Yeah, that's going to be super duper important.
Yeah.
Yeah, is there a way that we can force that to happen?
It's gonna happen.
It'll, I mean.
I'm working on it.
No, no, I know, I mean, it's just, it's just a few times. And I know you have a long, it's, it's going to be a long process here and you want to pace it and people have to pay for things. I'm not, I don't want to be a jerk about this, but it's super.
Yeah, it'll, it'll, it'll be there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
But so in terms of the. I mean, let's, you know, beyond the getting that piece of property. And, you know, we're working with what we're considering the full piece of property, including that other stuff. I mean, we, we haven't really discussed anything about the sighting of the building.
Yeah.
On there, so we're, we're assuming that what we propose, you know, again, assuming that we have that piece is is what we're working with.
It's a star point, yes. So, but again. There, there may be, there may be better options. And I think, not to sort of lead you to some other solution, but I think just consider, right, what we just talked about at high level. And what happens when you scooch all of that construction right up to the street on both sides? And what that, what that means for that sort of change, right? Not just change the sort of the kind of context of that intersection, but. More significantly, the, the experience of the individual at the sidewalk, at the street level. And if, and if that. If it means to to actually improve that experience, because right now, the way it's cited. You're just, you're jammed right up against boom. North Avenue and Beekman. And, you know, who knows, maybe there's, there's a carving out in the current sighting configuration. Maybe there's a breaking up of or a scooching, I don't know. So again, I'm not going to lead you to a solution, but the most, the most important thing to my mind, and this may be very responding to too, Kevin. Is just what I'm talking about, it's, it's, you're creating a giant wall there. And again, short of designing it for you, I really got to give that some thought.
Yeah, no, I mean, I mean, I, I understand that there's options and 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 part of it is that overall context of having a building in urban setting. And in sort of right at the downtown and then working with that arcade to.
No doubt, and again, I don't want to say that because, because the current building is set down low and almost unassuming. That that should preclude any, you know, movement toward the street, I'm not saying that. All, what I'm at least guiding you on is the fact that. The, the experience of the viewer. The minute that building goes up is going to be holy. This is different, right? It's, my world has changed, that's, that's all I'm saying. Whether you, you know, we can do anything about that, all I'm saying is it's going to, it's going to have a big impact.
Yeah.
Right, so whatever you do with that, do with it what you will, but. Know that there's going to be a response, there's going to be a reaction. So a lot of eyes are going to be on this. And I know you know this because you've done this a hundred times before. And you've, I think, had a significant positive influence on Main Street over the past twenty thousand years. So I know you know this stuff, but I'm just putting it on the record that we are, you know, also quite sensitive to this stuff too. So again, I don't think we're seeing anything that's surprising to you. And I also think what I'm, what I'm doing, what we're doing here is just. Sharing with you that we understand this is going to be a process, right? And there's going to be some iterating. And we're, we look forward to doing that with you.
Can I say one thing on citing while we're on that, just? You know, I, I do think in terms of like the purchase of that property, right? I think that it does help the project become more compliant with the code, right? Because before it was setback, what was it forty? With that piece, it was setback forty feet, so I think to the point, the code wants zero to twenty. I think playing with that piece definitely helps you start to come to that intent, the intent of the code of bringing it closer. But I think to what, what all the board members are saying is that what you're competing with on the other side of the street is City Hall setback behind a lawn. Which is not necessarily what you want to achieve here, but I think there does have to be, maybe it's not right up to the sidewalk, maybe, or it just has to be like more open at that bottom bit. Because not that you're trying to get a setback building with a massive eighty foot lawn, because that's what we're trying to avoid. But there has to be some tapering down of that, I think, as you're kind of talking across the street, the City Hall parcel and how that comes across. So I think that kind of, that will summarize my comments on the streetscape improvements and, and the architecture is that. That bottom level, which is going to be the most important thing, right? Because that's what the linkage district focuses on more than anything else is that streetscape engagement feels dark and enclosed. Right now, and it needs to feel kind of open.
Inviting.
And inviting, yeah. So it's just, I think that's the, there's many ways to probably do that and you guys as the architects would know way better than I do, but.
Oh, I've got it all figured out in my head.
Yeah.
Nobody hired me.
No, there's examples that you can see, like Main Street, right? Where there's the framing buildings on either side, there's sidewalks, there's pedestrian activity, there's multiple things going on all at the same time, right? The problem with highway development and strip malls, right? And why they're so low value and so nobody's interested in being in those places is because they're open and they have huge areas and it's very. You know, it's a different feeling.
Well, you've got, you've got no tree cover, you've got cars whizzing by and basically, you know, any sort of. You, you create a little teeny plaza and it just collects leaves, nobody cares.
A little bit in between, it's not a Main Street like on that street edge, but it's also not.
But it's an opportunity to have to rebuild the urban fabric that was there before.
Exactly.
I think that's the whole intent.
There, there is, there is pedestrian traffic, much more so than when we first moved here. So think about those, yeah, think about those people, right?
And it'll be easier.
And enhancing that experience.
I mean.
Feel safer, right?
Agreed.
Across, you know, across the corner is the park, you know, a small pocket park, the Welcome Center Park, I forget, Po Hill.
Do you sound like this thing?
No, oh, yeah, over there, yes, so, you know.
Do you know who you're on right now?
I think that. That can serve also, you know, as, it can continue across the other side of nine D. That sensibility of having public space for people, because it's, it's used, people are there. And it's a very prominent corner as been mentioned. I also think that maybe rather than emphasizing the corner of the building and emphasizing that corner of the intersection. Perhaps you could. Consider actually going the other way and making the corner of the building softer and like. and making the corner of the building softer and like a little bit more open and welcoming to people on the street.
Yeah. Feel like being back in college, Chris?
Well, I mean, in terms of your comment, I think that kind of goes with what John was saying. And I think, you know, partly that could be handled with how the building hits the ground. And, you know, because I know that that's sort of the key factor over there, but.
Yeah. Look, the iconography, if you will.
Maybe the corner is cut out as opposed to expressed with a tower.
Yeah.
Yeah, just don't do, don't do a, oh God, what's that architect's name? It's Italian dude.
Adam's family?
No. World Plaza. I can't think of his name right now, but don't do that.
You got it.
No, I'd, so again, I appreciate the sort of the nod to history, right? And what you're doing at the corner is, is interesting. It's got this sort of Gothic Victorian kind of thing. But do we really want to celebrate the verticality, right?
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't, I don't know. And if, you know, who knows if it were a nice iconic clock tower that people just were like, oh, that's the big clock tower. Yeah, maybe. Oh, there is?
Yeah.
We'll call it Big Arie. Just, you know, again, things to think about. They're kind of like Big Ben.
We got it.
You got it?
Yeah.
So we'll move on because there's a lot of other even more important stuff to talk about. But thank you for, thank you for hearing us out.
Thank you.
So let's touch on, there are some significant items we want to discuss, both traffic and sewage, right? And I know you also have other, other items that you may want to bring to the applicants and our attention from your reviews. So do we want to hit on some of those more insignificant things? Yeah, let's go to John first. And then yours, you're, you're going to, like the Fourth of July fireworks, the finale will be the conversation around sewage.
I thought there was going to be traffic.
No, then, yes, then we have that, you know, final, because that's going to be a long finale.
No, so they've come a long way with the plans and what they presented to us. They do have some cleanup to do on the plans. But looking at the utilities coming in, there's existing SOAR main, private source collection system that runs through the site. What they've identified on the northern end of the site is about five different connections that tie into this source collection system. We would like them to just study it further, whether through die testing. We think it may be some of the homes on Tompkins Avenue, or at least one of them may be tied in. And we have concern with that.
Could, could others of them be just defunct?
They could be defunct.
So we want to know.
We want to know what they are, because if none of those homes are tied in, they could actually eliminate a lot of that system that's on the site now and also reduce the amount of what they're proposing to put in through their site. But the other concern is if any of them are tied in, they're now tied into a private source collection system, not the city's. So they may have to take a look at rerouting those homes out to the source collection system on Tompkins.
Yikes. Yeah, that's a, that's a bit of a yikes. Thoughts by the applicant on that particular topic?
Yeah, we're in agreement with John's note about, you know, investigating those a little bit further with a diet test. So I think we're going to get in touch with Water Sewer Department, see if we can facilitate getting into those homes, you know, with, with a letter to the, to the owners, see if we can do the diet test and, you know, see if that hits any of the manholes that are on site to further confirm that.
So if it, if it so happens that all five of those are active and they're tied to other residential parcels, that the burden is on the applicant to redirect those? Yeah.
It's a private system. In speaking with Water and Source Superintendent, he believes that whatever was there previously, commercial wise or whatever else, they may own some of those homes there and tie it into their own system.
Kind of makes sense.
Yeah. So I don't believe they're all active. I think there might be one or two that is active.
Gotcha.
But if we can eliminate that because we can reduce the amount of piping, I think it's like 213 feet of piping.
Yeah, it could shorten up our services.
That proposal is new, plus get out the old system that I'm sure is bringing eye to eye into the city's system.
Okay. So great. We'll be curious to hear how those tests come back.
Yeah. Fingers crossed.
Great, thanks. Anything else?
No, we've been talking about some of them as we've been going along here. So the lighting, the cross sections through the site, the sidelines through the site. The rest of it is just, I'll bring along as we go through the process.
Okay. Is there anything else on your review that you wanted to raise to the level of conversation here?
I, you know, again, I think going to the, I'm starting at the back of my letter. So the LWRP review, I appreciate that being resubmitted. That was before my, my time with the board, so it was good to see that information. The rooftop common space, I think this is the first submission where we saw kind of mention of there being common outdoor open space on the rooftops. So I just noted some regulations about that that I think would apply in terms of the amount of roof area and setback requirements. For the lighting plan, I think in addition to John's comments about hotspots on the ground, it, the elevations look like there's quite a bit of lighting on the building that wasn't necessarily captured and we don't have elevations yet, we have renderings. So just noting that that should be kind of factored into the lighting plan moving forward so we can kind of look at the full site. For the landscaping, and again, this will kind of get into the streetscape. It did look, you know, I did want to acknowledge that it looks like there's quite a bit of mix of both like varieties of landscaping as well as heights and species. So that's applaudable. My bigger question was looking at, there are some tree grates proposed in front of building number two that looked like they're somewhat in the middle, but it might have just been the way I was looking at, I was seeing the drawings, but it looked like they were somewhat in the middle of the sidewalk, which kind of gets to the comments that I had in point number one, which a lot of the streetscape improvements, there's a lot of regulations in this section of the code about having a pedestrian clearway of at least eight feet. So it looked like those tree guards were maybe in that. So I just wanted clarification on that. And then I think most of the streetscape improvements, what I could say is, in the same way that the board is requesting a profile from the back rear residential properties, I actually think that's going to be really essential for how the building facade engages with the public right of way and the streetscape.
Definitely.
So we can kind of see both those widths and the improvements within that. And then kind of to the point, I think of the varying sidewalk widths. I do, I do appreciate that some sidewalk space is being added where possible. But there is going to be, again, I think it'll, we'll need these profiles to really see that or maybe the renderings will develop that more. I think consistency should be valued to some extent as well, because there's nothing weirder when you're like on a sidewalk and it then ends or like you need to move around, you know, you can't walk in the straight path, you need to move around or you get stuck in the corner of an arcade because it doesn't exit. So I think consistency and flow of pedestrian movement should kind of be within that evaluation as well, in addition to kind of adding pedestrian space where we can. And then, I mean, I think that was most of my comments. I did note, and the applicant notes this as well, a need for some variances, for a variance where some parking spaces fall within the required setback. And then, you know, I think I cited some like surrounding photos that it looked like maybe we're trying to inspire the architecture in terms of the tower. But I think it actually would, I'll add to my next one, I think, of looking at City Hall and the properties kind of facing on Beekman and as well as the ones around it, because there is a requirement of the architecture in the linkage district to look specifically to the context of the block, which I think you do already is what's trying to happen. But the materials and colors are supposed to complement the historic buildings on the block. So this is immediately adjacent to a historic district and the historic overlay. So I looked at properties within that, but.
I agree with you in theory.
In theory.
Do not look to this building at all.
Yeah.
As context.
Don't like to, okay. It's outside of the.
Hey, this building will be subject to a stick of dynamite.
Yeah. It's not a threat?
Yeah. Yeah, I spend most of my time moaning about the chairs, but.
I'm sorry. I come from City of Poughkeepsie. I don't know if you've seen our City Hall, but.
I'm sorry.
Not allowed to talk about City Halls.
I'm sorry, I haven't.
So that was it for, I think that was it for the majority of my comments.
Awesome. Thank you. So let's talk about traffic. Fun times. I'll just make a general statement. Like, I've been doing this a long time and I have every respect for engineering, data, numbers, analyses, but I got to say, we have added a ton of traffic. Not just through developments, but also through increased ridership. And the real world experience at this intersection is horrible. So and we also know that through studies and analysis that some of those intersections are at grade F, right? So they're very poor. And I understand that there are all types of potential mitigation measures or improvement measures that can be taken. Number one, I'll believe it when I see it. But I, we really have to understand what ultimately the real world experience is going to be. Because again, you could put all the numbers and data and engineering analysis. I have deep respect for engineers, even though I'm an architect. I love you guys. But, you know, the real world experience is what really matters here. So what, what I'm getting at is that we know we have, I'm surprised I'm even saying this word in Beek, a congestion problem at this intersection. This is going to potentially exacerbate that congestion problem, right? And not only that, there are other developments coming online. And I don't want to be like Chicken Little, skies falling. But the real world experience right now is that that intersection is poor. Not just during, you know, rush hour, trains letting out evening. I'm talking about weekends. There's just a lot more stuff happening here. There's a lot more traffic happening here. So whatever we talk about in terms of mitigating or improvement measures, they have to be real and they have to be believable. And, you know, you've been here, you've been at, you know, planning board meetings when you have the public saying, crying BS, I don't believe it. We should all be prepared for that with a real understanding of, and facts around how adding this level of, you know, additional activity at this corner is going to, in real world terms, impact and how the, how the, the application is going to fix or, and improve, not just fix. Because to take an F right now and say, well, yeah, we're adding some, you know, additional traffic here and it'll, we'll figure out a way to bring it back to an F, that's not good enough. We got to improve it. So that and, you know, there's, there's those F-grade intersections, there's one of them right now that we really got to focus on. You know, there's this whole experience of getting in and out of that site. Right on Beekman, when you've got heavy traffic, right? You've got long wait times. I've sat in it. I tried to figure out a way around, but I'm afraid of running, running afoul of the police driving through this lot. But anyway. It's a real problem. So, and so I know we have Stark on. And I know Stark, you've, on behalf of the city, have reviewed the applicant's traffic analysis and their reporting. So I wanted to give you an opportunity to, to weigh in, just as we have our planner and engineer on other matters. You still there with us?
I'm still here. And happy to be here. So John, as you so eloquently put it, there are some intersections that are of concern, specifically two intersections that came up in our initial review back in February. Those are Tompkins and, that just became a fractal, I think, on the screen. Tompkins and Ralph and North Avenue and Beekman Church and North Avenue. The latter of which we've known to be of issue from previous studies and from just observations, just people driving the corridor, the acknowledgement that Beekman backs up, especially when trains depart, where there's that departure from the train station. As acknowledged in our last review letter from February, the Tompkins and Ralph intersection currently operates at an acceptable level of service D, right? For the Tompkins Avenue approach, which is a stop controlled intersection, stop controlled approach. 9D, there's no stop signs on it, it's free flow. With the other developments coming online, specifically Edgewater, it's expected that the level of service at the intersection is going to degrade to a level service F. With the addition of traffic associated with this project, that level of service is going to be exacerbated. While it's going to stay a letter grade of F, the delay, which is another metric, will increase at that intersection. And based on warrant analyses that we reviewed from the previous study, signal warrant analyses, which are analysis used to determine whether a signal could be warranted at an intersection. It's apparent that a signal is warranted at that intersection and could be a mitigation measure based on analyses done by Colliers in their report that would mitigate traffic issues, bring that level of service F to an A, which is the best grade you could have with an operations analysis. So that's Tompkins and Ralph. And then we talk about Beekman and Church and Northern Avenue or North Avenue. This intersection, as we said, currently operates poorly, specifically Beekman Street. It's been acknowledged by observations, it's been acknowledged in analyses of the intersection itself. And based on analyses done by Colliers, there are signal changes and timing changes that can be done to the intersections that will ameliorate those issues at that intersection. And this is, this kind of improvement is going to benefit the traveling public. But I think it's also very important to this project because the real world, the real world queuing that you're seeing on Beekman is going to back up, up to, if not beyond, the proposed driveway for this site. And while we can put, you know, a do not block the box or something like that, is still going to potentially pose an issue for vehicles exiting out of the site onto Beekman. So I think it's in, not only in best interest of this project, but obviously best interest of the city to investigate or pursue having this intersection improved. Now, given that the application is currently working with the New York State DOT and this intersection's, both intersections are under the DOT's jurisdiction, it kind of makes sense for them to utilize that position to pursue improvements at these intersections, again, that are going to benefit them, this application, but again, the traveling public. That's the real heavy hitter of our analysis. Beyond that, you know, but we, we touched on parking in our previous review. Not much has changed there. We found the shared parking analysis acceptable, especially given that they don't take a credit for rail transit, which isn't acceptable credit, but it just gives a level of reassurance there. And there were some other site planning comments really that we felt were addressed in their most recent response letter. So not to close over that stuff, but I think the heavy hitter items, John, as you touched on, were those two intersections that clearly need improvements, one now and one certainly in the future, given all the developments that could impact it.
Great. Thanks, Stark. So, so you mentioned something interesting just relative to, you know, sort of extending of the conversation into solutions, right? You mentioned the, you know, pervy of those intersections and the signaling by the state. So, you know, in the, I'm not exactly sure how the process happens, right? As I hear, not just this application, but others, yeah, we know we're going to add load to the system and we're going to monitor it, right? We're going to, we're promising the city, we're going to monitor it at intervals. And if there is an improvement need, if there, if there's improvement needed, then we'll work with the state to do whatever, right? We know that there's going to be an improvement needed. So we know now is the time to, you know, start to really figure out how to address this. And you came sort of unfortunately. start to really figure out how to address this. And it, you came sort of unfortunately on the list in the line of applicants to where this is, this is now an issue.
Right.
Right? We know it's, right? Because we know the other applicants are gonna study it. But we know now also, just based on real world experience, that you come online, it's already a problem, it's gonna make it worse. So how do we get, you know, further down the road in terms of, like I said, instead of just, oh, we'll build it and we'll study it? Cause that's not gonna fly. We gotta have solutions, right?
Right. So I think that one of the things I forgot to mention when I was making my presentation, the last time that we were here, we talked about having a meeting with DOT. A call, a call or a meeting with DOT that Stark would be involved in and we would have a discussion with them about what we're proposing to do and, and how, how it would mitigate the, the, the impacts of the project, but also addresses the existing conditions, right? We kinda put that on the back burner because the project was changing and we were trying to figure out what was going on with the right-of-way and all that stuff. I think now, where we're at now, we're kind of in a position that we can have that discussion with DOT. So I think that's the first step. Um, and that's something that I should, I should have mentioned earlier, but that's, you know, I think that's a priority that we want...
That's, that's down the road toward real solutions. So that's great.
So I think that's, that's the first step. And, and obviously we would invite Stark and if there's anybody else from the city that should be involved in that, we would include them.
Karen wants to go.
So, yeah, that, that I think is the first step, is to get, you know, get their input, get their buy-in on what we're trying to do as well. And then we can come back to you with what the actual solutions are.
That's good. That's...
But I think the overall point the board trying to make is they have to get implemented.
No, understood.
You know, I don't think we need to study anymore. It's failing.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, relative to Beakman Street, I, I appreciate that a hundred percent. At Tompkins, you know, that intersection, like, we didn't go into this part of the analysis. I don't know that our traffic alone, if, if Edgewater wasn't there, would warrant a signal with just our traffic being added there. Edgewater's adding more, significantly more traffic there than we are, right? So there, but I'm, you know, there, there is a condition that we're showing that with Edgewater's traffic, it would, and our traffic, it would warrant a traffic signal. So I'm, I think that's where we talk about, how do we, how can we do that in a fair share contribution manner?
You may wanna invite other people to that meeting too.
I'll, I'll just mention on that point, you know, in some of the last few, um, larger applications that the board has approved in this general area, there have been conditions in those resolutions that require a fair share contribution to certain intersections that that particular project would contribute to. So, um, you know, it's not like prior appro, prior projects are off the hook and because you're last in, you're, you know, on the hook for everything. Um, and that's specifically why we put those conditions in there, so that everyone is contributing their fair share and, you know... Yeah, the discussion is probably for another time about how to do that fair share, right? We're not gonna make the sausage here. But, um, you know, that will, that'll get worked out, but, um, yeah, but there is...
They already have their approval, they have their COs. And there's a sort of an assumption, there's a, a hope that mitigation measures that were required.
Well, they're still subject to the requirements of the resolution that, that you adopt. So there, there are continuing conditions that apply.
Yeah, I remember those very specifically, because I thought it was a very smart thing to do.
Rich, something else is the queuing along Beakman. I know your report basically says, uh, you know, roughly 300 feet of queuing. But the people that work in this building, when they're leaving at the end of the day, can't even get out of the exit here.
I think, yeah.
Which is more than 300 feet down.
Right.
And beyond what's being proposed.
I think the 300 feet is with our recommended modifications at the intersection. So we're saying that that's what it's gonna be with the improvements, but we can take another look at that.
I mean, and if you improve the signal timing at Beakman and Nine D, if the light was added at Tompkins, would that also improve the Beakman and Nine D intersection even further?
I don't think so.
It, it might. It depends on how they set up the, the timing.
Well, it would, it would certainly, like, it would certainly have to flow that if you're making a left turn off of Beakman and go north on Nine D, you're not stopping at Tompkins right away. Like, that would have to be coordinated, that it would, it would flow through there.
I think the biggest problem will be the lights at the crease.
The lights, no, all the way down the line, all the way down the line, right up to, right up to this signal right up here. It's, yeah, I mean...
Can I, can I ask a, and I, this is maybe not a well-informed question, but it affects directly how your site plan's gonna work, is whether or not, uh, Mr. Stark maybe, or Stark maybe looked at this, whether or not, uh, turning lane or other, uh, roadway right-of-way, uh, changes would, and what the effect of that would be. That directly affects your site plan, it directly affects how we proceed, uh, signalization and all those other things are outside of your, what we're, what we're directly doing here. And everybody's sort of skirting around it. I'd like to have a, a traffic expert look at whether or not that materially affected, uh, the, the rating of the intersection, right, at the end of the day.
You make a good point, cause, cause my experience is, I live over here. So if I happen to, for some reason, whatever reason, not go up Beakman the other way and come up this way, most of the traffic is turning north. And if you're waiting for a left turn, you're stuck there until you're past any parked car in the, um, MTA spots. So if there's somehow the city could see to extending that left turn lane, so you can get into it faster?
So it's not, it's not necessarily a left turn lane, it's a...
I'm sorry, the right turn, excuse me, the right turn lane, forgive me.
Right.
See, again, I don't know what month it is. I do not know my right from my left, so I don't know why I'm doing this.
When I looked at it, it was like, the only one that's relevant is to your project is on Nine D, right? Not on Beakman.
The only one that's...
Okay, a turn, a extra turning lane on Nine D would be beneficial, because then that would affect that, that particular queue. Everybody's talking about the problem in Beakman, taking the left turn from Beakman on Nine D towards the bridge.
Yeah.
I don't know how, you would have to do something, see, and this is, it's not my area of expertise.
You're talking about putting a turning lane going right now, Beakman.
Which is outside of the scope of this site plan, right?
Well, so the question is, have they looked at it and is there any benefit to putting said right turn lane?
And, and the other thing is, is that the state's responsibility?
That's, that was my question. If, if you're looking at these sort of in to-do, right, all of these issues and the solutions, is, you know, restriping or re, whatever, even reconfiguring the intersection part of those conversations for solutions? What?
We have room for a roundabout.
A roundabout?
DOT has two areas.
They'll probably suggest, or a jug handle, why not? Let's, let's go the route of New Jersey. Anyway, yes, these are all good questions.
Don't laugh, DOT loves roundabouts, but...
I'm just saying, I, I don't wanna stumble into an approval, right, that then prevents future amelioration of the situation.
And there's, I don't think there's anything that we're doing that would prevent an additional lane on, on Nine D. There's forty, the 45 feet of right-of-way that we're not touching.
Well, that, that's something I'd like to see. I mean, somebody should demonstrate that. And I think...
Yeah, I mean, it's on, it's, it's, I don't know if it's, it's so clear up there, but it is on the plan that we're, that our property line is 40 to 45 feet.
Right.
Off of the curb line of Nine D.
Someone should be responsible for, what is the impact of that? How would that work? Is it something that's potentially, uh, with funding? Is it an opportunity that we're, uh, are we preventing that opportunity from happening?
I think what he's looking for, Rich, is analysis, does putting a turn lane in there improve anything?
If I can just jump in for a second about, like, you're talking about a southbound right turn lane on Nine D.
Yeah, yeah, turning it right onto Beakman.
Which is what affects directly the building location is what I'm saying, you know?
I don't, well, my point is it doesn't affect the building location.
What affects the, uh, the area that is between the curb and the building?
Right, but we're gonna take up an additional, if we, if there was a right turn lane ever put in there, it would take up an additional 12 feet or so.
But that's sort of, that's, I think, the, uh, the pertinent question for this application, in my opinion, right? Is what, cause the signalization is outside of our, right, it's outside of the scope. It doesn't affect the, how the building is located on the site, um, the, the pedestrian space, this between the street and the building. All those things are gonna affect the cityscape and the way that it sits in the, in the, on the site. How much parking they can provide, how many units maybe, right? I just wanted to know if anyone has looked at that and it would seem prudent, you know?
Yeah, I, I really appreciate your sentiment, cause, you know, it really does come down to what is the comprehensive set of solutions, right? We're certainly worth the conversation and obviously keeping the conversation open.
Just, I wanna jump in on that conversation, just about a turn lane. Yes. The, adding a turn lane is gonna increase your crosswalk, crossing walk, uh, crosswalk distance. And with signal changes, based on Colliers' analysis currently, signal changes could ameliorate the issues you're talking about on Nine D as well, without adding more capacity to the road, adding more blacktop, increasing the crossing distance. Something I know, I think Beakman is very, tries to be very pedestrian-friendly and adding roadway width is not something that's very pedestrian-friendly. So I think that's just something to keep in mind. I don't think there's anything wrong with looking into it and analyzing it, but that's just one part of the discussion that should be kept in mind about widening roads.
That'd be a terrible place for a crosswalk though, right, at that particular intersection.
That's where the crosswalk is today.
Where the crosswalk is today.
Would be ideal to have it where there's less traffic, you know?
Agreed. And, and I think that was actually part of our recommendation, was to look at maybe moving the crosswalk to the other side of, of the intersection. But yeah, I, I don't, I don't see a problem with us taking a look at the right.
Yep, yeah.
And, and showing that, we can show that what, what area might take up of the green space that's there today and show that it could be done in the future, or it could, maybe it's part of something else.
Yep. Yeah, we're not gonna solve it all here tonight, but very helpful conversation.
And I have one other question about the process you're going through with the state. Are they going to analyze this themselves? Is that part of their, or is it just a matter of like whether they're going to, uh, have the access to the parcel, you know, give you access to the parcel?
Yeah, so similar to like what we've, like what's, what your own traffic consultant does, we provide them with all of our analysis, all of the information that we've prepared. They'll look through it and review it, similar to your traffic consultant. If they see that there's additional analysis that needs to be done to look at things, in fact, they did ask for additional analysis and there are a previous review that we provided to them, they'll ask for that, we'll provide it to them. It's just kind of an iterative process until we get to a point that they're comfortable, that we've fleshed out everything that needs to be, uh, mitigated here.
Cool. Thank you.
No problem.
Anything else we can do for you this evening?
Nope, that's it. We just wanted to get your general comments and feedback. Looks like we still don't have a quorum, but we're not asking you to take any action tonight.
Yeah, good. Well, thank you.
Okay.
See you next month?
I'm on the next one too.
Oh, you are?
But you'll see these guys next month.
Taking a page out of Taylor's book. Where is he?
He's giving up.
Good. We're, we're happy to have you, we don't need him.
I'm trying to replace him. It's a two-minute drive back home, so it's very convenient for me.
Oh, good. Good, good. So, yes, next item on the agenda, this is the continued review of application for site plan approval, 19 Henry Street Townhomes, submitted by Lori Joseph Builders. Good evening again.
Good evening.
Oh, Donna. There she is. What? This is exciting stuff.
Uh, good evening. For the record, my name is Allison Fausner. I'm an associate attorney with the law firm Cuddy &amp; Fader. Uh, tonight I'm appearing on behalf of the applicant, Lori Joseph Builders, um, and together I'm with my project engineer, Mike Bondor from Hudson Land Design. Uh, we're before you this evening in connection with the board's continued review of our application for four two-story attached townhouses located at 19 Henry Street. Before I turn over to Mike to review some of the minor site plan amendments and updates and as well as the I and I report, um, I do wanna note for the board and its consultants, and this is something that's kind of been footnoted in our letters for a little while, uh, the applicant has elected to move forward with a condominium type of ownership, so no HOA, that's not our intention, so we're not moving forward with a subdivision application. It's simply the, the site plan application that's been before you.
Great.
Okay. All right, Mike, you wanna come up?
Good evening. All right, so we've made some changes to the site plan since the last time you've seen it. Let me get to the sheets here. So we, we're showing that the existing sidewalk would be replaced in its entirety along its frontage. We identified trees on the site that would need to be removed. We provided a landscaping plan and lighting plan. Uh, we, we provided separate driveways for each unit. We did move the units closer to the front property line. Um, I believe that our letter said 10 feet, but it was actually four and a half feet. Um, we do have an opportunity to move that a little bit closer and we, we can do that. We identified the water main size and material. We provided driveway aprons, which will be revised based on going back to a monolithic curb and, uh, sidewalk configuration along the front. Um, we added a note that, um, handles the encroaching fence. Uh, we labeled additional proposed utilities on the site and brought those more to, you know, to design standards. Added low sewer elevations. Um, we changed our storm water connection for the roof leaders to the east. We were previously showing it going to the west. I think I already touched on the monolithic curb detail. So that's generally the changes that we made in response to the, uh, to the comments that we received.
Another question, you mentioned the monolithic quality of the, God, the sidewalk curb cut drivers. Help me understand that, cause it's really hard, cause I think I know what you're talking about, but it's really hard to confirm by the drawing. Do you mean that, that there's one curb cut for all of the driveways?
No, no.
Monolithic is the curb and the sidewalk are one piece?
Right.
It's all cast as one piece?
Oh, okay, I understand.
So it results in a much stronger curb, so it can handle plow hits and so forth. The only reason why we took a little piece of sidewalk out is we were trying to reduce impervious, but it may look, may make the sidewalk look a little wonky against the eight-foot wide sidewalk that's on each side of it, so we're happy to...
We should consider that, cause look, there's so many things along that entire street frontage that are so just dissimilar and it's, it's just a mishmash. I wouldn't want, cause, you know, this, I have to, I have to sort of laud the, uh, I was gonna call the client, the applicant, for making some really nice aesthetic moves on the buildings, right? So, um, points for that. But again, you know, we, we talk about this whole experience at the street, right? And we talk about this application is somewhat precedent-setting, it's precedent-setting, right? And if you think about the, the potential for any number of neighboring lots to take this queue and do the same thing, this same thing, you know, potentially, um, repeated multiple times down the street, especially with, could be nice, but with this kind of driveway configuration and its relationship to the sidewalk, I just see it as being a disaster, right? So, leaving that where it is, even alone, even if, you know, that doesn't come to pass, the, this whole like interaction between the driveways and the sidewalk and the street is just weird, right? And I understa, no, no, again, you're, you're thinking, you're thinking like an engineer. Love you. I love you, I love you to death. It meets the code, you can do it, it meets all the requirements.
I wasn't gonna say that.
I'm talking about the experience, right?
Yeah.
It's like Queens. Queens is weird. I lived there. It's a mishmash.
Or San Francisco.
Or, well, maybe, there's some, there's some good potentially positive. What I'm getting at is that have we really, have we really scrutinized what this is, what this is gonna look like, feel like to the experi, to the user experiencing, and I'm not just talking about the owners, I'm talking about people using the sidewalk there too. So, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to preempt what you were gonna say or...
All I was gonna say is, you know, the sidewalk would be eight feet, so you have much wider of a sidewalk than you normally do on, on these side streets. You know, Main Street has those wider sidewalks, but these side streets don't typically have those. These driveways really aren't any different than what is to the east of this site. All of those houses have driveways going out to the street.
But they're not so close to one another.
That's fair, yes.
That's kind of, that's one of the things that I'm responding to. And I'm also, and that's the reason why I... And I'm also, and that's the reason why I asked the question about monolithic, because again, is the experience of the sidewalk user walking or with a kid riding a bike up, down, up, down, up, down, up, down?
Right.
That's weird.
So the rear portion of the sidewalk can actually...
Stay up.
Stay up and be flat. And you're just having the front portion just be a slight little ramp.
Yeah. That's what I was saying, my daughter loves a wheeze. She calls them wheezes. Whee! But for the, for the aging walker, that's a tripping hazard. I'm going to fall down. I don't want to do that. Sorry.
It kind of makes sense to lose, lose the sidewalk in between the, the five-foot edge and the curb though, in that case, because then you're not tripping over the, the flare of the driveway.
Yeah. So, um, so what you're saying is, and again, I can't tell this from the drawing because it's not clear, is that, is that that sidewalk experience is going to be uniform for the walker? The cuts are more...
The cuts are more towards the...
Toward the...
Right, and then your, your slope would happen in this section here. That's where your driveway apron would be.
I'm not seeing that. Is that, I mean, I'm looking right at this thing.
No, because you don't have the latest plans that would show the monolithic what you had.
Yeah, this is, this is what was submitted last month, so we haven't made that change yet, but we're, we're happy to make the change.
Okay.
And with the monolithic curb and sidewalk, you don't have the sidewalk panels settling creating tripping hazards at the curb lines.
Yeah. Okay, well that's, okay, that's better than what I was imagining.
Yeah, I still like to push back on the four driveways in a row and this isn't...
Four cars in a row sitting roughly, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're sitting roughly what, 10 feet apart from one another with a little bit of grass? Again, that's just really unique to this. And again, if you cascade that down the entire street as a precedent setting model... Yeah.
You want to bring up your food? Maybe something behind?
Yeah.
Well, if we're going to look at the comments, yeah, I think I do see the constraints that you're working with on the site in terms of you're needing your side yard setbacks on each side that you...
Right.
Take the exact amount, right?
Yeah.
I think to what the board's saying, the ideal solution here would be one single driveway to the rear of the parcel.
Right.
The parking in the back of the parcel, right? Because I think what we're getting at is that that could, you're trying to reduce the number of curb cuts in your walkable amount of environment.
Yeah.
This is adding three where there's currently one, right?
We're actually only adding two, but...
Adding two. Which is four total.
Yeah.
Which is a lot in this span of space and you can't traditional town, well, if we're going back to Queens, I don't know sometimes on driveways, but like usually the townhouses like closer to the sidewalk or not necessarily. So I think that's where like a conflict between the style and the density we're trying to employ in my letter, I think the density matches what the transition zone is asking for.
Right.
Which I do want to give enough to that in terms of the townhouse style and these four, even if it meets a lot of your requirements for these units, but I think where this is kind of falling apart in this walkable, slightly more dense transition zone is this, this curb cut aspect. So I guess I don't know if there's a way to narrow the building to a bit. It could be a driveway, it could be moved to the back, I'm sure there's other constraints, but I think that's, that would be an ideal solution.
Doesn't need to be four, it could be three.
Sorry?
Doesn't need to be four, like could be three townhomes to allow for a better site area. You know, there's the example on Schneck, Shank.
Beauty, you can't get that name wrong here in Beacon. Skank.
Skank?
I'm serious.
No way. No way.
Yes. I learned that on the hardware a long time ago when there's a lot of old people like, "Where are you from? Skank."
So we did look at trying to accommodate that.
Yeah.
We do have some concerns with it. Obviously, it does add impervious to what this plan shows now. You're probably going to be over about 70% lot coverage. Eliminates any backyard or backyard amenity. It's just going to be all pavement back there. So no patios, no grass, well, some grass, but very little.
There is a precedent for that too, and this applicant built it.
We're concerned about lighting and light spillage over the, because we would have to provide a light pole most likely back there if it's a parking lot.
Really?
Bollards work.
Are they acceptable for parking areas?
Well, you tell us, so...
We'll, we'll have to look into that more, a little more.
It's, look, again, we wouldn't be doing our jobs if we didn't raise these concerns.
Right.
And again, I understand, you know, you, you meet the requirements, but that does, does that make, does meet, just meeting the requirements make good planning? And I think what you're hearing from us is if there are other potential scenarios available that reflect better planning, then we have to study them.
We'll see what we can do.
I understand your concern too.
It was just, you know, there's, there's a lot of, and I, I think it's a great idea. And I think it's a great idea on larger sites where you can actually fit a building in with the parking. You know, obviously it would narrow the building, but it also shrinks the depth of the building as well, because you have to provide your parking stalls, you have to provide your backup area, and we're even looking at one ways with angled parking. It's still, it really shrinks everything down quite a bit.
Yeah, no, understood. It's, again, it's, it's the age-old question of, you know, you want to get the highest, highest use and best use, but we got to do it with solid, good planning, right? So...
Understood.
It's unfortunate, and it's, again, it's, this is, this is almost directly across, this is directly across from that intersection, right? Where you, I don't even know the name of that street. It's not Skank. The one that runs along the...
Veterans Place.
Yes. Thank you. So it's very visible, you know, not just from down the street both ways on Henry Street, but when you're coming down Veterans Place, you're looking right at this thing. So it's great that the buildings are pretty, but you're looking at the back ass end of three, four cars, right? When everybody's home too.
I, I just don't think it's unusual. I really don't. Townhouses have driveways coming into the front of them all the time.
Not all of them?
Not all of them, yes, that's absolutely true, but it's, there's a lot of them that do.
Yes.
I think we have to think about the context of the location of this particular townhouse and, and the urban fabric that, the, the transition zone is trying to encourage.
What's that? Yes, a lot of townhouses do have parking just like this. It's...
It's very suburban.
And it's, it's a little bit of a different context and a different environment where that feels natural, that feels appropriate. And I guess what you're hearing from us is that...
Why can't they park on the street? There's a lot of parking. I'm sorry. You know, there's a lot of parking available on Henry Street, on both sides of the street, plus the municipal parking across the street.
There is.
So would it be that much of, of an effort to, or difficulty to forget about the garage and just have parking in the street?
Even if they had the garage and pulled the, the house up to the 10-foot setback so that the cars not being parked in the front yard would be helpful.
I feel still good the driveway curb cut, like break up to the pedestrian walkway, like visibility of the car is a concern.
I think you're going to wind up parking partway into the driveway and partway in the sidewalk.
Just like they do in Queens.
I can go through, keep going through my other comments.
Yes, please.
Yeah, so I mean, kind of tied to this, I think, just noting, one of my comments is noting that the minimum setback is 10 feet, and I think as they noted, they're, they're still back 21 feet, so I think that all ties into the conversation about can this building be moved closer to the building, to the sidewalk to make a more consistent street wall? Although I do think that it has been moved forward from what the current setting is and is, you know, somewhat in line with the adjacent buildings on either side and moving it closer, so it is an improvement. But again, here, this being kind of one of the first developments in a T-zone and kind of setting the standard, I would assume by the 10-foot minimum that that, you know, closer to that would also be supportable as well.
What is the average across, I mean, again, it's a bit of a mishmash, but if you think about, you know, its closest neighbors, there's, there's a couple of houses to the west before you get to the brick, Servpro, what was Servpro, right? So, but is there, is there a consistency across that frontage?
No. And then there's the commercial building, the office building in the other direction.
Yeah.
That's, that's right on the property line.
It's what?
It's right on the property line. The corner building.
The corner building is, yeah, not the professional building. So it's, yeah, it's a bit of a mishmash. But again, if we think about it, this being precedent sent, precedent setting, we would look to any future application to, you know, have a consistency to this. So is this, is this the right start point? Right?
Yeah. I'll skip over my parking comment because I think that was more of, I was trying to figure out how we were categorizing this building, and I think now that we know that it is single-family, which includes attached, which includes townhouses, then the two-space per unit is the parking requirement, so we can kind of keep operating with that. I did note that, you know, I think while there wasn't anything in the code in this district that said anything about garages or parking being in the front of the building, there is kind of requirements for the driveway, so I didn't review it for compliance with chapter 100 that it notes in the code, but there is sections in there. So I think, you know, that's where it got, kind of got to the point where there is discussion there about traffic and pedestrian safety, and I think that's where the conversation about consolidation of a driveway.
Sure.
Or, or less, or, you know, smaller driveways kind of plays into that, that pedestrian safety aspect. The architectural elevations, I noticed that it does look like we had that change and then, you know, I think that they, that did respond to the comments of the planning board at the last meeting where we were kind of talking about nodding to the more historical architecture, adding variation but keeping in the same style, so I do feel like it did that. I think we just do need the full, we do need the full elevations and, and of all sides with material callout, and that comes into the conversation about bay windows. Okay. So those are nice renderings, but I wasn't seeing elevations necessarily. So I think the bay windows too, in terms of that projecting, they look like they comply. There is just some recommend, there is requirements there of them not going out more than three feet. I measured it with the scale and it looked, but if we could just kind of note those dimensions on that so we can kind of confirm that.
Yeah, and just, just a point of clarification on that, it's just a dimension that goes beyond, like perpendicular to the, like the farthest point outside the building setback. It's not the width of the bay window, correct?
No, yeah, it's, so it's, you can project out to three feet.
Yeah.
And then the, the extension can be up to one-fourth of the length of the wall.
So it would, so the, the longest width of that bay window would be the number that you're looking at?
I'm looking at both, so it's two dimensions, right? It can protrude out horizontally, protrude out from the building up to three feet. And then the width of the bay window can be up to one-fourth of whatever wall it's on.
Okay, all right.
So it's two different dimensions about kind of its projection out as well as its width.
Okay, thank you.
Just, I was just curious about the townhouse units. My, my comment number seven is about the unit layout, and I don't think we, maybe, I'm, maybe I missed these floor plans. I, um, because it was requiring that all residential, so I must have just missed that, that updated, making sure that all the residential rooms kind of have windows, so I didn't, I didn't see this floor plan, so we can ignore number seven. For landscaping, was looking at the, that the plan identifies individual trees and shrubs, but didn't kind of note, so I think I missed this, this kind of comes into a conversation, John, we're having about the grass on the sidewalk, the proposing addition, so I think there are intended to be grass areas, but I just didn't see that necessarily called out in the landscaping plan, so just to clarify exactly what's the material for surrounding the patio areas and things like that. Trash, I was interested to know where trash was going to be stored, if that, the garages look a little bit tight, so I was wondering if that was the intention, that they were going to be smaller haulers like kind of inside there?
Yeah.
If there was a consolidated area?
That's the intent. We, um, the garages are shown correctly and dimensioned correctly on the plan as 20 by 12, or 18 by 12. I think we noted in our response letter that they're 10 by 20, but with the 12-foot wide driveway you can fit, or sorry, garage, you can fit the individual rollout containers in there, so that's where we're proposing to store those.
And then my last comment was about the ownership and, and whether I should, we should be reviewing a subdivision plan or not, so I think that's been addressed.
Sorry, just in terms of the cans, did, did whoever drafted this just show cars that were too big? Because what you're saying is, again, I believe what my eyes tell me, I don't see space in these garages for cans.
On the rendering, yeah.
No, here. That's the floor plan.
They're not shown on there, no.
Yeah, but, okay, they show a car.
Right.
And I know how big a can is. How are you going to get it back in and out? And where are you going to store it when you have a car in there?
It's tight where the can is, yes. I mean, my, my parents have a single-car garage. It's 10 feet wide. They fit a 36-inch can in there with an SUV.
All right, I'll believe it when I see it. So if you could show where you're storing garbage?
Sure.
Yes, that would be helpful. I don't mean to argue, I'm just saying...
You know, the fallback to that is we could provide enclosures outside for them on the corners of the site if we had to.
Again, I'm not here to argue with you, I'm just saying, like I said, this looks, it's hard to believe that cans would fit in here. So show me, that's all.
Sure.
Show us.
Not a problem.
And that'll satisfy that requirement. So these, these aren't illegitimate concerns, and again, I hope we're not frustrating you with our observations.
No, not at all.
It's kind of our job. Right? Isn't that what we're supposed to be doing? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anything?
So they did do an I&amp;I study of the site. They found two sump pumps in the basement that are connected to the sanitary sewer collection system, and Mike had done some calculations during heavy storm events and high groundwater periods, those pumps could be contributing over 10,000 gallons per day.
Per day?
Per day.
Because the groundwater's still out there.
Groundwater, right. That's a lot of water.
Doesn't, didn't the stream that goes behind Madame Brett, the Madame Brett residence, that's buried through that area? Am I correct? It was a buried stream somewhere around there.
Well, it's, it's piped. It's all piped now through.
Right. Does that affect the groundwater? Is that, is that contribute to groundwater problems in that area?
If it's piped, it shouldn't be unless there's some seepage out of it. Usually if the groundwater's high and it's hitting an empty pipe and there's some openings, it's going to go up into the pipe and take the path of least resistance.
That's just super low lying, and historically, and I know this because I live over there, it was, was marshland, actually.
Yeah.
It's no surprise.
So...
Our basement's a whole lot of water.
So anyway, the, the engineer went on to say that that will be, the pumps will be disconnected and removed prior to the signing of the plans by the chairman. I'm also saying that basically, once they get the work done, the building department should verify that it is done before you sign the plans. One of the big ones I'm saying is that Henry Street in front of the project should be paved for its full width and to a point 10 feet beyond either side of the project where the last trenches are for the utilities. Otherwise, we're going to have eight trench lines in that road. So install the utilities, restore the trenches, and then we'll have the applicant mill the road for the full width to a point 10 feet beyond the last utility on either side and have a nice uniformed surface.
Could I just ask a question about the sump pump? When, what happens to the groundwater once the sump pump gets dis, contact?
It'll just stay in the ground, or basically at that point, they're going to demo the building. So what will happen next is the new building will have sump pumps in it and it will be tied into the storm drainage system.
Not the city sewer?
Oh, this has a cell. I just noticed it downstairs. There's, there's a, there's an unfinished cellar underneath all this, right?
That's, that's some total of your comments? Thank you.
Yeah.
Alright. Having fun?
Always.
Thank you for your patience with us.
Thank you.
Is that all we can, anything else we can do?
We were just wondering if you had any further comments. I know there was a lot last month about the elevations and the building itself, how it looked. I'm hopeful that all of the changes were responsive and Dan Stigosa's correspondence addressed it, but wondering if there's anything additional you might have at this point.
Yeah, I think, so as I mentioned at the beginning, a significant improvement aesthetically from the last time we were looking at it, for what we can see. Right? So not only made a good point, straight-on elevations of all four sides would be super helpful. But beyond that, I don't know if you have anything you want to add, Karen or Kevin or Donna?
It's better, it's a better location on the site. And part of this is driven by the transition zoning, which was, no one was quite sure at the time, the intent, from my recollection, from my memory, is that it was meant to be, give the opportunity for both commercial or residential development. And it was a transition between the commercial areas and residential areas. That was the intent because it was an opportunity where there was once an intent to provide tons of parking in every area transition, you know, outside of the main street. And that probably isn't the best idea now, right? And I think this, this residential part of it works, but I would, my preference was always to see a mixture of residential and commercial uses. And I would, I wonder whether we want to look at, whether or not there's a way to encourage that within the zoning. So that the market, which right now is going to build all residential and maybe things exactly like this. And I think it would be a shame, what John was saying is, if this was exactly all the same, if the zoning required this particular building type for the whole block, that would deter, right? There's the opportunity to do commercial and other things, but the market is probably going to do something like this. So we might want to look at the zoning to see if it's really wants, is what the community wants.
Thanks, Kevin. Anything else on the aesthetic, Karen?
I think it's an improvement. I think the issue, you know, that we discussed about its placement on the site and the car access into the site is the issue.
Anything, Donna? Yeah? Just one note, and again, I think a lot of the improvements have to do with some of the, what I would call actually rather nice sophisticated detailing here. The brackets, the proportions, some of the detailing on the columns. I certainly hope the applicant intends to build it like this.
I'm sure he does.
Okay. So, because yes, I'm not saying he's subject to this, but again, even like the detailing, if you look at the detailing around the windows, pretty sophisticated stuff. There have been times in the past when we've been shown things that haven't been built the way we've been shown them. And I sure hope, because this is actually quite beautiful, if you look at some of it.
This is why I always request elevations. Rederings are pretty, but there's so many times that a renderer shows something that actually isn't on the elevation or isn't part of the plan.
Exactly.
So having the elevations with the callout detail and dimensions, I think that becomes the really binding and remit as part of the submission, so.
But also, do you know what they're going to get for these things? Like, there's the money involved with development like this now, where they can afford a couple pieces of AZAC trim, you know? It's really not.
Yeah, not part of the conversation, Kevin.
It's a different beacon than the one we started.
No, I agree. All I'm saying is that what the applicant's putting in front of us, and you make a very good point, the way to sort of make sure that it does, if this is what he intends, because he's showing it to us, we want to make sure that what we're seeing is what's actually going to get built. And that's the, that's the mechanism, so.
I think we can tie that into the resolution, or Jennifer can tie that into the resolution somehow.
Yeah, because again, if we, yes, thank you. If we think about these as precedent setting, they have a nice quality to them. So it's, it's, short of the other aspects that we were irritating Mike about, they could set a very nice precedent.
We will work with Dan Stigosa and the client to make sure we have detailed elevations submitted for next month's meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
Awesome.
Alright. Thank you very much. Nope, that's it.
Great.
Have a great night.
If you all don't mind, I know it's been a while, but we're going to take a quick one, one and a half minute break, and then we'll get back to architectural review. With that, so we're back for architectural review. The first item under architectural review is one, it's a new single-family house at 144 Spring Valley Street. Is that applicant here? Hi.
Hi, good evening. I need a step stool for this. There we go. Good evening. My name is Sandra Arndt. I'm the architectural designer for this project. It's a single-family residence and it's the second time we are here. This was brought up here, I think, two months ago for your commentary. Page one just shows you context again, so you can situate yourself that house is to be demolished. You see the retaining wall on the street and we are not, we are keeping that and we're not planning on keeping that wooden fence that you currently see there. On the following page, you see our updated elevation. Last time we were here, we showed an schematic elevation, so that wasn't really designed yet and figured out. So we got there. And it's still the same concept, which is two shifting boxes. Main reason for two volumes is to kind of break down that long street frontage, but also to provide a longer driveway up into the garage, because currently it's awfully steep and people struggle to disembark. What we have done is, we kept those two volumes, but we talked to the owner and they agreed to, you know, work a little bit on the budget so that we can have larger windows. So that helps a lot. We also changed, we adjusted the heights of these two volumes. We always set a lower front and a taller back volume, but we made that difference a little bit larger. So currently, we go there later, but the front volume, you're looking at 24 feet 10, so let's call it 25 feet. The back volume, you're looking at a little over 27 feet. So two feet difference in height. Also, the front volume last time was, in our first schematic, was shown as a gray kind of stucco, and I think the reaction was warehouse here, which I get. But again, we haven't gotten there yet. But we changed to show the cedar wood that we had in the back volume on the front volume, just because it's a bit more tactile, a bit more friendly, you know, a bit better for, you know, bringing human scale more towards the street front instead of the back. We also added elements, I mean, the main change is the larger windows, which is helping a lot, but also those framed elements, which is flat roof etching. And it gives depth because it not only gives us the roof overhang, but also gives us some shadow and definition and helps a little bit with shading on those larger windows and defines a little bit what these volumes are. But mainly, it's a spatial depth that we get through those. Materials haven't really changed on the next page. And then we just show a line drawing just for dimensions, dimensioning all these main elements. This is contemporary modern. I did, I wasn't here last time, but I didn't hear or got feedback of, you know, it's too contemporary. We are talking about 50 feet width for each of these volumes. And we are allowed to go up to 35 feet in height. I don't want to push the height further, even though we do have space to go taller, simply because there is no need from an interior perspective, but also I think in terms of street experience, because we are 50 feet long on one of these volumes from the street view, and we are close to the street, we have a 30-foot setback, but we get to grandfather the existing setback, which most houses on these street have, to be more in line with what's there. And so we are very close with that front volume to the street. I don't want it to be too tall, given X-length, so proportionally to us this works, but we give it to your comments.
Thank you. I'm just curious, I understand there's a pretty significant slope from the street up, right?
Yes.
So from the street up to where you first experienced that first 50-foot volume, what is that distance?
It's 17 feet.
Height-wise?
Yeah.
Yeah, because then, so.
17 feet setback.
Oh, so 17 feet setback, but then.
The height difference, we don't have a topographic survey yet, but it is roughly six feet.
Okay. So, yeah, because part of the height, and I appreciate your restraint, especially on the back piece.
Yeah.
You don't need the full height? This is a good example of why you wouldn't take it, because your experience at the, at the street level is just, this thing is up there, right?
Yeah.
Just because of that additional six feet.
How tall is the existing structure?
The existing one to the gable, to the ridge line is 20 feet.
So it's a little bit higher, just goes up.
And is the floor, your finished floor for the front similar to the finished floor for the existing?
Yeah, we keep that level, just because, so one idea is.
Can you?
The topography here is parallel to the street. So these long boxes, you know, like go with the topography, so we don't have to reinvent the site and do more retainage. But also, we want to keep that existing level of the existing house. You see that buildup there in front?
That's what we're looking at here?
Yeah, exactly.
So curious.
Can you lower the floor?
So here is the reason for the three and a half feet that you're pointing at, that concrete foundation giving a little crawl space. That is because we want the same level within the house. We don't want a level change for accessibility, you know, to not have steps within.
Yeah.
But we would like to, because we take the front fence down, we would like to landscape the front and that, what you're pointing out at, we can plant grasses and shrubs and lower vegetation.
I'm curious, then, so does this surface become a, you know, sort of a outdoor feature or something? Or is that, is this, is this in plane with?
Yes, it is in plane.
Well, actually, it's in plane with the outside frame, right?
Correct, yes.
Because by the looks of it, this is, especially the, the shadow lines, because that's all I have to go on, this wood part is inset.
Yes, yes.
As well here, this is pretty deeply inset against this frame, right?
Yeah. So the front volume, the inset, is only six inches, six to eight inches to give a shadow line. The back volume goes out a little further to give a canopy to the front entry. So the front entry is not that double door or that what you perceive as door.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Okay.
It's next to the garage door? The front entry?
The front entry is you slip in on the side, you don't see that on the front elevation.
Yeah.
So that secondary frame you pointed out, that is deeper, because you see the shadow line, that is like a 30-inch, you know, protruding out to give us sort of a canopy to the entry, the main entry that slips in between those two volumes.
So, yeah, did you happen to watch the planning board meeting two months ago when your client was here?
I, my client was here, yeah, and I got those comments.
So you, you were able to see our, our comments in real time?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so thank you for your patience with us.
Oh, no problem.
I understand.
No, they were understood. We also came very early, you know, just in schematics, so.
And, and with that, thank you for hearing us and responding. So, you know, I'll, I'll just go so far as to say, it is definitely an improvement. One of the things we always struggle with here is, is that as part of architectural review, you know, we think about the context, right? Your neighboring, your neighbors', your neighbors' buildings. And again, I'm, I'm all for modern contemporary design, and I love it, right? But, but one of the sort of parameters that we have to, as a planning board, work with because it's part of, part of our law.
You're right, yeah.
Is this idea of, and again, there's nuances to this, but whether it's too similar or too dissimilar within the context, right? Some would say, this is very dissimilar, right? Others would say, well, we like variety, right? And this isn't Disneyland, we're not building, you know, cookie cutter versions of, you know, some bygone era, right? So with that, and we actually had the benefit of one of our members, David, lives in the area, and he, you know, he didn't feel as one of the neighbors that this dissimilarity was too jarring. So all that is to say, we're aware that this is, you know, it's sort of unique in this context, right? Because it is very modern. Personally, again, I think it's, it is an interruption to the sort of rhythm, just in terms of the kind of, I guess, I don't know, I don't know how best to put this, is sort of the expected? It's unexpected, right? Is that a bad thing in my mind? Not necessarily. So I'm willing to kind of, sort of be fuzzy about my view of this concept of too similar, too dissimilar, right? But I'm really curious to hear what my fellow planning board members have to say on that particular subject.
I too am, I like contemporary and modern architecture very much. I don't have an issue so much with the aesthetic direction, but I feel like in the context, the typical face of the house is narrower on the street and it goes longer to the back. I feel that that particular arrangement, regardless of what the, the, um, style of architecture is, is more impactful in the neighborhood than the style of the architecture.
Although, the existing house breaks that trend already, right?
Right, well.
So I guess, I guess the existing house is unsalvageable, huh? It looks pretty, it looks pretty banged up.
It is unsalvageable, yeah, I know. We looked at it, I mean, it's 100 years old, so, you know, we are all for, you know, what can we keep? But on this one, it's, it's falling apart.
Yeah.
But I appreciate those comments, because I share those thoughts. So one is, the existing house is smart in a way that it goes with a topographic layout of the land. And currently, the water runoff, there are two, the front retaining wall and one a little bit further back that we want to keep. You know, that water system is working on site and we don't want to interrupt it too much. We also don't want to excavate and go deep into the land, to your point, make it narrower in front, it's more contextual, and then dig deep into the hill, because it takes away a garden in the back, it gives us a side garden, which is nice, but it, it would be an intervention into the ground that is, I don't think, you know, if we can avoid it, it's a good thing. To the eclecticism, I walked in that neighborhood quite a bit, because that's a thing that comes up quite a bit in Beacon. And it can be, and I appreciate you being, you know, I'm not sure, neither am I, to be honest. It's, it's a tough call to make, right? It's not, it's ambiguous. But in that particular neighborhood, I actually added those to, they're not direct neighbors, but not far away, just another house over.
These guys?
There is an eclecticism on that street, yeah. So I showed those because they are flat-roofed houses there.
Yeah, I had a reason, I had a feeling that was the reason why you put them there.
Exactly. And, and I thought, you're not going to possibly like the flat roof-ness of it. I like it because it makes it a low building, given that it is so long. And that's why, to me, it was. And that's why, to me, it was important not to even approach the 30 feet or the 35 feet, you know, keep it low. And also, what I, to me, contextually, when I get a hiccup always when I walk that street is, there are houses that do what you say, they are narrower, like most houses in Beacon from this front street, but they are very tall, those neighboring houses. There, one right next door that is, I don't know, the pitch to the gable is probably, you know, 35, it has to be 35, I would assume that's code, but it, it reads very tall, given that you walk low on the street, but the topogra-, topography is like, you know, six to eight feet up.
I think the, the one other concern is, I, I like simply the proportion of the, I like and I dislike the, the front face of the back volume, the black.
Yeah.
It just, it feels a little heavy. And it could be just the color.
Mm-hmm. Agreed. Blackness is always, you know, I mean, we're not gonna go raven black, black-black, you know? It can be a dark gray.
A deep bronze, right?
A deep brown, an oil-rub bronze color.
I appreciate the idea of creating that contrast. I, I have to say though, you know, we're gonna go there, I agree with Karen. I think the frame on the front piece, the relationship at the top of the windows to the top frame, because it could use a little help. But also, the depth of the top frame there might need just a little bit more, right? In relationship to the, just be, and again, I'm not, I'm not trying to steer you back toward traditional proportions, but it just, it just feels a little bit better if you've got a little heavier on the top and then, and then the same, the heaviness of the rear piece is, maybe it's really standout, right? So maybe, maybe give what you take from the back to the front in terms of that top. Does that, does that help?
Yeah, we can flavor that.
So it's just a little bit of balancing.
Yeah.
But otherwise, you know, all in all, I think it'll add visual interest to the street.
I live, I live two blocks, a block and a half away, so it's a mishmash.
It is a mishmash. It's like Queens, it's a mishmash.
It's a real mishmash.
It's the theme of the name. So, I'm in support of it. So I think if, if you're able to, and again, we're not gonna ask you to come back, but I think in your
Thank you.
In your final submission to Bruce, if you could take into account those, again, that's, from, from my perspective, real, real big advancement from the last time we saw this, so thank you. And if you're willing to make those slight adjustments to the top frame on both the front and back, I would appreciate that, I think Karen would too, and maybe my fellow planning board members, so if you, if you make those final adjustments and submit those to Bruce, I'm in support of improving this. What do you say, Kevin?
Yeah, the only other, like, sort of comment I would have, that is, did you look at the garage door? And whether or not that was, that needed to be the same color as the trim? Because what happens is there's, you have a pattern, right, of the edges and the borders that are black, and that, that could be like a, a pattern, and then there's like planes, right? And so the garage door being a plane, but it's the same color as the line patterns that vary in thickness a little bit, that, I was like, the problem with that is now you have a third flat material and then you've got so many materials, it's like, you, you, there's two, you lose that discipline of, um, the simple planes that read, you know, like the sin, you know? So you had three materials and that's a nice way to, it makes it stronger, the design stronger if you do that. That was the only comment, design comment that I had, is you can't make the door stucco, right?
There's something, yeah, I see what you're saying, but there's something, I'm imagining what you're talking about, lightening up the garage doors, but it would take something away because there's something very anchoring about that, especially as it relates to the front piece. So, I don't, I don't know.
But these are great, they're great discussions to have, right? And it's the fact that we can, and you can as a designer, right? Finesse these things which have to be done when you do contemporary work, right? It, it, it has to be worked out, and there's a different bar for this than the residential townhouses that we just looked at, which are pretty much cookie cutter. That is something you can get from a catalog, there's hundreds of catalogs and just do that same thing over and over again.
Although, people can do that really badly too.
No, no, I know, I know, what I'm saying is, it's, it's, it's a different discussion.
Oh, yeah.
And I am glad that there aren't many people that are doing this work in Beacon, and I don't want to make it seem like it's impossible as long as, but it's a higher bar because
Yeah, you have your point.
You have to be a designer. You can't, you can't just pick it out of a catalog when you're doing this.
Yeah. Awesome. Donovan, what are your thoughts?
I like, I, I, you know, when I saw it the first time, I fell in love with it.
Oh, nice.
But the windows were really disturbing because they were just too small. So i- it sort of looked like just regular containers, which is okay, you know, to do building like that. But with the windows now, the way it comes, and especially the long, narrow window that's there, it really, it's, it's really, really beautiful.
Feels good, good.
Yeah.
At least we don't have to have the conversation about shutters. Or chain link fence.
Wait for it.
So, it's a good day. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Karen, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay, next item on the agenda is certificate of appropriateness. This is a sign at 475 Main Street. Hi, having fun?
Yeah.
Okay, let's see how, let's see how much scrutiny we can put on your sign.
I'm ready for it.
Uh, it's actually quite elegant, quite beautiful. I love your font. I'd love to know what that is. Anything you want to add? Oh, here, I had a question. Do, do, do. You're showing this, this is at the Fridman Gallery right now.
Uh, well, so the Fridman Gallery's been gone for a little while, but I found the, that image is from, just what's still on Google Maps, and just so I just showed it. We, we, we found the sign in the basement and just measured the exact specifications, so that's exactly what it will look like.
So, the question there is, you found the sign in the basement, it's not there, but the bracket is.
The bracket is, that's, that's that inset.
You're gonna hang it from the same bracket?
Yeah, that inset picture on the second page is the
Yep, now I see it.
Is from a few weeks ago.
So that's what you're intending to do, is what I'm, what I'm hearing, okay. Are you intending to paint the bracket?
Uh, we were not, no.
It's called patina.
Ah. Patina. Uh, okay, and then, so just as long as this, from my point of view, as long as this meets the size requirements, Bruce, I love it. And it's, it's white on, it's black font on white, right?
Yep.
Lovely.
I'm totally in support of, and good luck with your, your gallery.
Yes, good luck. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Karen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda. We're cruising, we're cooking with gas now.
Except we're not allowed anymore.
It's not that late. Certificate of Appropriateness, 263 Main Street. This is another sign. Is that applicant with us? Hi, yeah, come on in.
You're the next contestant.
Service master, restore.
I'm listening.
Yeah, sure. New sign, service master.
Aluminum composite with digitally printed UV gloss.
You are, yeah, basically, again, black font on white background with a yellow logo. 24 by 24, works? And you're, you're, you're planning on using the existing bracket?
Yes. It's already there, just gotta clip it in.
Yeah, okay. UV gloss laminated vinyl applied sign. Okay, sign is to be mounted to existing bracket. I should read this stuff. Thoughts?
Uh, I'm fine with that.
I don't have any problems, it's, it's, I, I, it's a service, you, you
Were you on the Henry Street?
It seems like an odd Main Street
Yeah, yeah, it is.
I'm not gonna judge.
Yeah, I do restorations, like property damage, like water damage, fire damage.
No, and you were, you were in that Henry Street.
I live right next door, I live on 249 Main Street, and so it was just kind of convenient.
Nice, all right. Good luck. Uh, motion to approve.
Motion?
Motion by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Karen, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next item on the agenda, new single-family house, 925 Walcott Avenue. Hi there.
Hello.
Have, have you learned anything from these past rooms?
I told Bruce during the break, I'm getting a real education here.
Oh!
Enjoying it thoroughly.
This is the site right down the street from me that
So they weren't able to redo, uh...
Tragically
Yeah, that was a crazy
Yeah, crazy time. Question.
Sure.
I think, you know, in general, things are okay here, but, two things. These windows up here are a little wonky, so we'll talk about that in a sec, but I'm really curious about how you're, how you're resolving this interaction between the roof and the columns?
I'll have the designers come up.
Hi.
I think it, it, yeah, I don't think this is the proper pitch that it will actually be built at. I think that was just for the rendering, yeah.
Yeah, it's, and in fact, it's not really the pitch that I'm curious about. It's just, it's just like, I, you know, I have doings for a living. Your drawing doesn't represent, correctly, I think, how you're actually going to build this.
Correct, and I should do something that we got just while we were sitting here for the architect.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Because we have been begging you. Hopefully that helps.
Oh, okay. So this would be great if you submitted this.
We, literally, we're sitting here, I said, he just sent it. And we will happily email that over to you.
Is this Oh, this is tons better than what we're looking at here.
This was very preliminary.
That was super preliminary, I've been waiting and waiting for it.
Yeah, that's what you do with architects, you gotta wait and wait.
I'll mail it to you, I promise.
This is a totally different plan. Now, you looked at
I haven't seen it yet.
Do they have adequate, it looks like there's not adequate windows for light and air in the back, but
Which one do we talk about, the one they
The side, the side elevation, like whatever's there, it's quite an expanse.
Uh, back to the garage.
It's the garage.
It's the garage.
Yeah, it's, it's attached.
Is this intended to be a single family?
Without the site plan, it's hard to read this, but also, it's also a big blank area and that is facing a street?
It's all gonna get landscaped.
The plan is landscaped tomorrow.
Yeah.
We should, we should see, we have to see these things, right?
So, I don't
We do. So, but here, here's a question. Is this a single family, is it intended to be a single family?
Single family, correct.
Ah, very interesting, because I heard a lot of rumors.
Well, we did too, and we bought it on speculation, knowing that we were gonna put a single family up there. We have found a buyer and they're working with us with the design that Jaclyn had initiated.
So that's part of, now that, now that we have actual buyers, they have
Okay. So, okay, when, how, so, this seems to be, just given what you submitted to us and what we're looking at here and now, tonight, evolving. I would, I would rather approve something closer to this, but you haven't submitted this, even though I'm just holding this. So I'm, I'm curious about your timing.
I mean, look, look-wise, it's, that's essentially the look we're going for without the
Yeah, we kind of, it's hard for us to go on essentially, because we got, we get burned all the time. I know, you're trustworthy people.
And believe me, this is a site that, that their neighbors, they're my neighbors too, and it's
What you're looking at now is close with the buyers sitting here, as well as what they're approval.
Yeah, that, and that's all totally awesome. But, if you, if you, if you, if you wanted an approval, would you mind coming back next month with this, resubmitting? Please? Because, you know, we could just say no right now, you'd have to.
Yeah.
Because, again, there aren't, there aren't enough things resolved here.
Can I ask you a question essentially? If we just resub, that, that's what you're looking for, is if it's just resubmitting that, that is
You have, you've given us so much more to go on here.
But you need materials, right?
And I would have, I would have asked you
We do have those tonight.
They do have them on this list.
Yeah, we are prepared to answer questions, but
Also, the porch roof is like the thickness of corrugated metal. There's a number of construction things that really have to reflect reality, right? The actual way that it's gonna get constructed. So rather than rendering that's, uh, just shows planes and abstractions, right? It should reflect the way that the actual construction, you don't need to do the, the details of a porch yet, but it should be the way that porches are built, right?
Yeah, yeah, and that's, that's kind of what I was getting at.
Right, yeah.
So here's what I would ask your architect to do. Figure out how to resolve this better, right here.
Okay.
This. Right here.
What are you looking for specifically?
Um, your architect will know, I cannot, I cannot design it for you, but nobody builds anything like this. It's just, it's not correct. And you, you would normally have some kind of return here, right?
And, and also, it shouldn't butt into the, it shouldn't be a flat plane. This has come up before.
Is that fascia across the front is gonna have a return?
It should, so, yeah.
You can do it a number of ways. If you look at traditional buildings, you'll see how porches actually turn into buildings in that, in the fabric of that neighborhood, right? And they don't do it like they do it in strip malls now and things like that.
So you're, you're, honestly, you're headed quite truly in the right direction. There's a lot here to like. I think he's got a, he, she, excuse me, you gotta think about how, you know, this stuff is resolved.
Super preliminary, we have maybe gotten to the stucco
Yeah.
Decor.
So totally respect that, and I understand this is evolving, but you can also understand our sort of predicament. How can we approve, approve something that's evolving, right? Because how can, again, back to my original point, how can we be confident that what we've seen and approved is actually gonna get built? The way we
It's been presented.
Exactly. So, so just a few more minor details, right, in resolving, and please don't push shutters on this thing. Please, God, don't push shutters on it.
We're not, well, that's not, any of the, the buyers
The minds I've ever been
Okay.
There's, there's a, this is a type, it's somewhat Italianate, the double columns, the brackets, all this other stuff.
Starting Second Empire, which is what we initially wanted.
We wanted to have it not burnt down and then they really liked the Italianate.
And then it evolved into their style.
Right, but all those, all those proportions, you know, there were local architects. Davis and Downing, right? Who were famous landscape architects, and he did a number of drawings for, especially Davis, who was his partner, of Italianate buildings, he sort of did.
Yeah, totally.
And all those are specifically proportioned, they're very, very carefully done. And if you do that, if you spend the time with your architect to get those proportions correct, if they're, if they're talented, right? Totally will pay off. Your building will be valuable, you'll be, you'll get respect. It's, 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 it's time well spent, because you can't undo it once, it, once you, like, rushed into this process.
Uh, we're on board with the owner.
Okay.
Let's take, we didn't even rush the process to build, this is our first building in Beacon, so
We've done a lot of renovations.
We're Beacon family, born and raised, and we saw the opportunity to take that lot, and that's how it started to evolve, it was a spec home, the client came in. So we were happy, Bruce kind of guided us to what we would need to do. We knew it was preliminary, what we said to you, so we're happy for the big thing.
Yeah, okay. So, yes, if, if you could please
He's heading in a great direction.
Absolutely heading in the right direction.
Yes.
And again, this is, this is, we all live in, right, I mean, I know where Kevin lives, right down the street from me, and we're all, we're all looking at this thing.
Yeah.
We know, everybody stops us every time we're in the lot, everybody.
That's exactly why we purchased it.
Yeah.
It's, it's to make a statement, period, appropriate.
Yes, and
Hey, we've been reclaiming all the bricks, don't be taking it.
No, we have been reclaiming all the bricks to use them as walkways and
Good, good, good.
It's a Beacon thing, you know that.
It's a Beacon thing, we know it.
The DPW.
That's my yard, yeah.
DPBW.
That's exactly it, so That's exactly it, so we've been down there little by little, stacking lots of local issues to the project.
Good, good, good.
Any other feedback? So we can get it right on the next meeting?
Just tell your architect to watch the tape, seriously, because this is all recorded. And, you know, listen to some of Kevin's comments about just looking at some historic precedents in this, and yeah, proportion, historic precedents in this, you know, architectural style, especially, again, to my thinking, as the, as the roof at the porch terminates itself and its relationship to the column tops. And then just other minor things, like he, she, he has obviously gone to the lengths of sharing with you progress from this to what we saw tonight, so I'm sure any self-respecting designer or architect knows that what they shared with you still needs some work.
Yeah.
So.
And I could tell when I spoke with him this morning, he was talking like, hi.
Yeah, we know this video is not.
He wants to get to this.
Well, give your architect a break now.
No, 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 give him pressure, Italy.
Keep the pressure on.
Why should I have expect?
Obviously, he's fantastic, and he understands what we're really going, he understands the importance of this specific lot.
Good, and you can tell, like I said, this scared me, the original scared me. This helped quite a bit, and so it's just that next step, you have a month to get there, and I'm sure we'll all be very happy to approve.
Thank you for vacation.
We'll send money?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, just like the last one? The poor owner came and we just destroyed.
Oh, he's obviously your mom.
Grandma's our local story.
Okay, oh, great, awesome.
Right.
Well, thank you.
Well, then you're familiar with Downing, and some of the Davis drawings that he did for some of his cottage architecture, yeah, and he did a number of, a very specific type of Italianate style that really took off a lot of copies. People use it as a pattern all over the country.
You're 90% there. Looks great.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, appreciate that. You guys have a great night. All right, and best of luck. Thank you for what you're, what you're doing. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Karen.
Second.
Second by Kevin, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.